Hold the meeting for one, that's horizon so we can find.
We have the highest paper in America, two year old, two years old, on the ground, beautiful, pretty, as I saw.
Al, could you please read the certification compliance?
The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press and posted on the bulletin board in the office at the town of Lakewood at least forty-eight hours in advance. The public has agreed to attend this meeting. Members of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the open public meeting.
Well, please, thank you.
Mr. Fuentes.
Here.
Mr. Garfield.
Here.
Mr. Stern.
Here.
I apologize, I've got to order Mr. Sable.
Here.
Mr. Flansman.
Here.
Mr. Hertzel.
Here.
Mr. Brenner.
(coughs)
Mr. Isaacson. Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Raisik.
Here.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome back Mr. Fuentes and I wish you well.
Thank you.
Swinging professionals?
Do you swear from the testimony before the court with the truth, or are there nothing up here?
I do.
Generalization of the votes.
Yes, first we have SB twenty-three thirty-five for Polo Canyon Tour, major site plan. Eligible to vote on the applications, Mr. Stern, Mr. Sable, Mr. Hertzel, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Raisik.
Motion.
I just want to make sure that it says, uh, well, norms that there's.
I, uh, well, sorry, I didn't refer to the comments of Mr. Sable. Do you want to see them, I did review them and compare them with those that I had from the meetings, well, for minutes. I don't think I recall that, but I would trust that I did make sure that doesn't make any difference. Correct, single line, I appreciate you for that.
Just one only question on this panel.
Yeah.
Just, uh, just, uh, yes.
Yeah, just want to be exact.
Oh, okay.
Find the right one.
I just know Mr. Sable, he was, uh, like, a little bit. They are available on the website, so the, you know, the public and the board can view it.
The votes hanging out, it's very important.
I don't recall our meetings, I'm sorry.
First, the minds move, we have a second, on the resolution. Second, all in favor, aye.
SB twenty-three thirty, Major Sable.
SB four.
Yes.
And you have motion, number two?
Move.
Move, all in favor, aye.
SD twenty-three ninety-two, Myers, aye.
Move.
Move, and second, all in favor, aye.
SD fifteen eighty, amended, Major Sable.
Move.
Move, and second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
SB twenty-three thirty-seven, Major Sable.
Move.
Move, second, all in favor, aye.
And SD twenty-four nineteen, Curst, Major Sable.
Move.
Move, second, all in favor, aye. Okay, on to the other ones.
Uh, the proposed ordinance, you have a copy when you're sat there, is regarding chapter eighteen, section two hundred, item B, with definitions in the ordinance. This is a redefining of the term hotel or hotel, I believe this one paper says. This came from the committee, they don't have the necessary background information on it, but that's what's being proposed.
What, what is being handed to?
Uh, the definition has to read, says a building having sleeping rooms for the temporary occupancy of guests and in which there is located a lobby or recreational area with interior hallways. The proposed replacement reads, a hotel is a place of lodging that provides temporary sleeping accommodations and supporting facilities that may include, but not be limited to, a lobby, full-service restaurant, cocktail lounges, meeting rooms, banquet facilities, and convention facilities. It typically provides a swimming pool or another recreational facility such as a fitness room. I assume this is just an attempt to clarify what falls under the category of hotel.
Or the many. Like, expanded, expanded.
Correct.
Is this, is this, is this anything you can find prior approvals?
No, this would be, this would not look back to previous approvals, is my understanding, Mr. Jackson.
I, I don't know what the history of this was. I know recently that there was an appeal, uh, and a hotel application was reversed by the board on the basis that they didn't say that it was a cocktail lounge or a restaurant or something like that. Terry Dassie emailed that, I can tell from that.
Isn't this interpretation?
I'm sorry?
Isn't this an interpretation?
No.
So to say, the words will just explain what was the original.
This is just an amendment to the ordinance to, to clarify what a hotel is. So these elements are part of the definition of a hotel.
It wasn't the thought of it originally.
What you're doing here.
Well, it says above it, they crossed out. A building with sleeping rooms with temporary occupancy of guests, with a lobby or recreational area. So they wanted to include a hotel to include restaurant, cocktail lounge, meeting rooms, banquet facilities, convention facilities.
Which I think more vulnerable in a hotel.
Well, yeah, and that's the governing body's determination to decide what would be permitted as a right, so they want evidently expand the definition, that's what this does.
What are we, what is the planning board's role in this?
The planning board's role is to review this and advise the governing body, A, that it's consistent with the master plan, B, that it's not consistent with the master plan, or C, don't make any comment. And, um, by statute, the board has X number of days to review it, it's relatively quick, I think it's like thirty days, and if the board does not review it, then, um, the, the governing body can act. And if the board says it's not consistent, the governing body can still adopt the ordinance, it's just in that case, they need to have an extra vote, like they need a super authority to change the vote count to adopt the ordinance.
Well, should we, this is going backwards, or, I mean, or would this be the new ordinance?
Well, whatever, uh, if somebody had a, you know, going forward, you reply to any new applications, and if somebody had a hotel, I guess if they wanted to go add a, a restaurant to an existing hotel and they had the room for it, it would then be permitted use in effect with board licenses. As opposed to having to go to the court of justice, saying it's not part of that use.
Motion to go along with recommendation?
I take motion to go along with recommendation of the governing body.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Flansman, moves. Mr. Myers, seconds, roll call, please.
Mr. Fuentes. Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Sable. Mr. Flansman.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Hertzel.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Raisik.
Yes.
Okay, on to the public hearing, Al, you know, there are three changes to the public hearing.
Um, there is a discussion about moving one of the items up to number one, so we can confirm that we have a forum, I know we have a board member rest in the early tonight. Uh, I would recommend that you take SB twenty-three thirty-eight, congregation lots, first. I know a couple of the board members have a conflict on this application, so they need to step down as well.
All right, take this. Yes, I'm gonna recuse myself exactly. Mr. Flansman stepping down, Mr. Meyer.
Me as well.
And, uh, this guy's just not here, okay?
Number thirty-eight.
And we still have a forum.
This is SB twenty-three thirty-eight for congregation lots, it's a minor site plan, with additions to the existing.
Dave, just give me a second. Uh, which one's listed, you ready?
SB twenty-three thirty-eight is forced into hot-.
Okay, Dave, would you like to go through the report?
Sure.
Please.
Project needs a couple submission waivers for, uh, architectural drawings and, uh, shade trees. And, uh, I guess I just, uh, take action on my request.
What's, what's with, uh, what's with A twenty-two? They don't have to give anything, but that's addressed, I guess, they hear. So, Shit, you recommend that we run away from it?
Uh, there's a difference between submission waivers and the design waivers, it sounds like that maybe with the overlap.
Right, right, we're, we're all working on the submission waivers on, uh, aye. You prefer us to, to launch a test upon the submission waiver before the board makes that. Please raise your identities for test one, to do before the court with the truth, hold on. I do, flat lines, professional engineer, professional designer, Lakewood, New Jersey. Uh, with regard to the, uh, waivers, uh, shade trees, well, so you can't confirm who it's just. Um, the shade trees from the prior application have been planted, I have seen the site, they're not, you know, about six foot tall, over the front of the property, so if you don't need a waiver, which is, they were not located on the plan as existing shade trees. So, we need that waiver, and the architectural drawings, the missing, uh, an architectural plant, just an addition to the building. So they're all set, multiple floors and all that, it's just three, two small additions to the building, uh, and, uh. Uh, yes.
So do we have a motion to go along with recommendation, do we have the votes? To grant the waivers, the waiver's seat, uh, motion, okay, just raising the vote, we have a second. Dave, a second, all in favor, aye. Okay, on to Zoni.
Okay, going up to, uh, Zoni, their, uh, project has, uh, existing non-reform set-backs, uh, which would be intensified with the building addition from thirty-nine feet to thirty-point-eight feet. Also, their, uh, is an existing trailer, which, uh, needs, uh, action because it's an accessory structure that requires, uh, a variance for set-back. And then there's also, uh, likely, we need required, uh, twenty-foot perimeter buffer, and for, uh, off-street parking, located within, uh, keep proper. And then we're gonna do testimony on, uh, on off-street parking, as to whether, uh, any, uh, rights would be required. And lastly, uh, side set-backs required, where normally fifteen feet, in this case, uh, it's only one, I presume because of the, uh, uh, freeway dedication that's necessary for on the county highway.
Dave, who do you prefer, Mr. you, uh, we have this.
Man.
The plan's showing just one.
Well, you have to go on one of them.
One of these, I can, I'll guess all the, I'll guess one of them, I'd like, just to go to one of them, did you just chair that, or did you just get after it? Did you finish your?
Uh, there's all, there's also some design waivers, uh, on this, and, uh, I think actually, Testman's already addressed the first one, about the shade trees that come from the planet. And then, uh, then there's a design waiver from, uh, the riding curb and sidewalk along the county highway.
Okay, then, you didn't want to chair this one.
Better talk to the college of credit. Uh, the board has seen this, this, uh, congregation on before the board several times, this is really a success, uh, as, uh, the shoe is growing, uh, approximately two hundred families that use this, uh, this house of worship, the center dock, which is located basically across from, across from, uh, Westgate. Uh, so there is, it, it's a existing, um, institution that's there, uh, we're really here before the board to add approximately seven hundred square feet for a women's section, uh, which is highlighted by Annis Glen, just to mark our two exhibits at this time. Um, we'll mark, uh, eight-one as the minor site plan, is there a sheet number?
One.
Sheet one-one, and we'll mark eight-two as the, uh, the first floor, uh, plan. Um, as you can see in the bottom, we can definitely testify in a minute, we're really just adding some bathrooms, an area for the women, uh, and a ramp to help access, uh, the building. Majority of the variances are all good, previously approved, uh, before the board, the site works, there's parking, there, there is everything that needs to be here, um, and I can't, I'll assess Glen, just to walk us through the variances, just so we can get them on record.
First variance was a, uh, variance for the existing, uh, office trailer, uh, which is, uh, the two hundred feet back on the property. It's, uh, remains there from when, uh, this was a contractor's, uh, yard.
In the rear vision?
It's, it's, it's in the rear.
It must have garage?
Behind the garage, yeah, it's even behind the garage.
A big piece of broken?
Yeah, but, um, it's just kind of left over from the, uh, prior use, but, um, there's really no reason to, uh, remove it, um.
They use it, right?
The, the house, really, they use it for storage, extra tables, chairs, um, no sign of it. Again, it's not, it's visible from the street and set back fairly far.
It's a store.
Correct, yeah. It's an, it's, it's an office shelf, but they use it for storage. Um, the, I'm sorry, I just kept the first variance was for front set-back. Uh, because of the angle of the building, uh, the, uh, old front, the old corner of the building was, uh, thirty-nine feet from the property line. Uh, the addition, which is the, uh, the bathroom addition on the, uh, the right side of the building, that's how thirty-point-eight feet of the front property. Existing, sorry. No, it's a front set-back.
Basically, the corner of this front, uh, back.
It's in that, it's on the website, it says, see, it's better. Technically, normal, you would have thirty feet. Here, the D, which is five-seventy-five, that's where you have the entrance. Correct. The, uh, parking, uh, is, uh, I'm sorry, the perimeter buffer, um, which would be required around the properties. Uh, the properties that previously developed, this is all basically a big gravel area for parking, this existing parking, um, that would, that accroaches into the buffer on the east, east side of the property. And, uh, the, uh, driveway and the handicap parking area, uh, extends over into the buffer on the, uh, west side of the property. Next is the relief for the parking, uh, we have an existing parking area along this, uh, again, east of the side of the property, it's about a foot off the property line where, uh, five feet would be required. And your number six is, uh, off-street parking, we're not requesting an off-street parking variance, we have sufficient parking from the previous application, and we're not proposing, uh, any additional main sanctuary space, which is how we calculate the, uh, parking on the center dock.
Where is the?
All behind, the, the parking's, uh, along this, the west, east side of the property, and then you can go around the metal building, and this is all, all.
All gravel?
All, huge gravel parking area. And it does get used, and it's well. The, uh, next variance is, is an existing sign, uh, right by the main driveway, uh, it's about a foot off the front property line. If, if we moved it, if we move it back any further, it'll be behind the, there's a nice wall of hedges along the front of the property, uh, so if we, if we brought, brought it any further back, uh, you wouldn't be able to see it at all. So this way, if it is visible from, uh, from Whitesville, Lakewood, New York Road now, if we, if we move it to be fifty feet back, uh, you, you would never, nobody can see it all, uh, crispy, crispy hedges. And those are the, um, those are the seven variances. Uh, design waivers, um, as I indicated, the street trees have been, were planted, uh, I was at the site a month or two ago, when we started this application. And, uh, we are requesting a, a waiver from provided curb and sidewalk along, uh, Whitesville, uh, Lakewood, New York Road. Currently, uh, the edge pavement is about, uh, ten feet off the property line. If we were to put in curb and sidewalk, the county will require us to dedicate, uh, approximately ten feet, and then put the curb and sidewalk, uh, back at the new, at the new edge pavement, which would eliminate the, the street trees that have been planted, the, uh, hedges that are long there. And, uh, again, increase that front set-back, or decrease the front set-back, just down to about, uh, about thirty-point-eight feet.
Is there any sidewalks on Whitesville Road?
The sidewalks up, uh, in, uh, over at Cory Court, uh, in Lakewood, there's our lot, there's a residential lot next door.
Which has, uh.
They do not have, there's no sidewalks there, and then there's, uh, one last lot, which used to be a, uh, a restaurant, that's been torn down, and there's no sidewalks there either. And then you're in Jackson, and there's no sidewalks from there to travel. So we're really on the, on the end of town, they, they really aren't gonna, this is the last thing that people are gonna walk to, and, and again, there's sidewalks on the lot, on the corner of Cory Court, so we have access to the property from sidewalk, with sidewalks, uh, from, from east gate. But with sidewalks, you really isn't gonna accomplish much, so we wouldn't request that. Yeah, this is, this is a nice, this is a nice, probably shrugs out on, all that will be done.
Is curb right out?
Nothing. No, no, the curb's in on the other side of the drive.
Curbs, also safety issues, cars coming on the side.
Mr. Fuentes, I'm sorry, you do have to have the mic pointed at least for you, thank you.
Not that I know of, I mean, if, if the county has a, a master plan.
Yes.
Uh, roads they would, they would approve.
Yes.
But, it's, to my knowledge, this isn't very close to the top of this. I mean, we've got, uh, you know, Plainsville Road, and, and east, east county, there's, there's a dozen, dozen other roads, I believe, the county worry about adding a, a half a lane to out here.
I haven't seen anybody walking.
No, the, the furthest they've walked is, is to the sense, I mean, there's, there's nothing else.
How many people walk, uh, you say, is, it's, it means, it's gotta be cloud, that's, considering, possibly bringing in a work, or if you become a, that's gonna be walking.
No, no, the, it, the, I apologize, the parking lot is, it's paved from Whitesville to the back of this metal building, that's all, that's all asphalt. It's just, it's, it's just the area behind the metal building and pretty much behind the center dock.
And that's all, and that's all.
And then, and then the board, in the prior, in the prior application, required us to put in a, uh, there's a concrete sidewalk that runs through for a, uh, a big walkway, uh, back to, uh, Cory.
Because the train, the square, the whole board works for us?
Yeah, well, that's true.
Yeah, I think the, the high point is probably, uh, maybe halfway through, you know, even with the building, and then the rest of it all drains back to the gravel area, which, everything just sort of, back there. So it's only, it's only maybe, uh, sixty feet of the front driveway that can go out to this room.
I have to ask, um, we will call the variances, I just want to make sure the, 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 the criteria, I know these are all portion of pre-existing, uh, variances, and again, uh, the servicing community, uh, broken, for, for broken, um, you cannot wait to negative, uh, these are critical variances as well, is that correct?
That's correct.
Anything else you can?
I think you only have one barrier, is that?
Correct, we do have, correct, we do have to, 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 to ask again, and as long as, uh, anything, have you reviewed that, uh, we have, it's here too?
It was, it was saying, number six, where you want the traction, it's like?
It's, it's saying, uh, as it.
As it, there's a, um, there's a dumpster in the, in the back of the property, back in the grass, next to the metal building, um, where the garbage truck can easily get in, pick it up, and then go back out. And I believe there's, then there's the yellow recycling.
Okay, that's, how do you do on this, the back gravel, uh, area? Golden trees on the, how do you get there?
You get, you get there by going around the east side of the metal building, and then basically this large L-shaped area is all gravel parking.
And, between the tree and the metal room?
No, you didn't, no, that's the, you're looking on the west side of the old, okay? The, you enter, you enter the site where the, where it says white.
Yeah.
Okay, right where it says white, that's the entrance to the property, you, and then you proceed back, oh, yes, I'm sorry, yeah, there's an eighteen-inch tree, I didn't see that before. Yes, between that eighteen-inch tree and the metal building is a two-way drive to access the back parking lot.
And, and again, if I can, this is a, a.
Existing.
This is existing, this is, this is a, the building has used throughout the day, uh, they've never been, it's, 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 um, we're, um, you know, we're here to add approximately seven hundred square foot, um, woman's section, you can have, um, a handicap.
Is there another shul in the area, 'cause, you know, I've driven by here like.
It was my schedule.
No, I know, I know, on this side of the road, is there any other shuls?
I'm gonna, where, where?
The school. Where's the school? I just, I've driven by here in like nine, and just everybody coming out, it's just a mess, I don't know if it's a parking issue or a ingress, ingress issue, or am I actually that?
No, they, they, probably there, that's a park, they have, uh, several, uh, several options for services, they can be building, right, so you're not realizing, you can, ask them all the time, use the actual park, uh, with, uh, parking on the street, running out, as you probably see.
The people are parking on the street, even?
There is, there is also street parking.
Right.
That's permitted. I think that's what you're parking.
Correct.
But there is official parking.
Do people stop using, or what?
Well, usually utilize, sometimes some people, there's few, like, there's not to park and park, teachers not to get to the zone, there's no trying to walk. There's a park, did that park not, no, you just, you park that numerous times.
Alright, so we have, we have no problem, a couple signs?
Yeah, or.
Yeah, trailer, yeah, you, you can import trailers, you can do a way of getting to the back truck. Now, trailer, when, when this was a contractor's yard, there's enough for me to get two dump trucks side by side through there, so there, it, it's no problem, it, it just looks small, there's a scale of the truck, which is, um, it's, it's, it's a mass. Barely.
It's a large, it's a large one. It's a large, it's a large one.
Could you relocate it to the corner of the driveway? Did he brought it?
Not, not, it just, there's a lot, lot, three, they just...
Say, we have the tree right in front of us, no? You have that eighteen inch tree right in front of you? Right. How wide is, what's that brown, the tree, how, how, what? The trailer, what, what's next to it?
It's, um, raised concrete, it's like a raised patio. So then when you, you know, you go, go in the doors to the trail, you're...
You know this property, but this is run from, I think it's, it's a...
It's out of wood?
Do you have wood?
No, it's not, it's not, it's...
Yeah, but it's...
This is the trailer? That's not, that was, it was a site today.
Oh, perfect. You, you read this right now, both now?
There wasn't, nothing, in this case, it was going to be... This is more than, again, expression, expression of, of herself, that would be...
That's, that's not a requirement, it should be possible, you don't have a county. You have to park, you have to, you have to work, you have to go with the...
We want one out of the numbers, we go with the main sanctuary. The lady doesn't answer it, so it should be a, it must be working. Any other questions, any board members? Signal, we'll open it to the public, anybody for the public, like to be heard on this application? What's with these sidewalks, they do have a partial sidewalk over there, what, they don't want to continue it to the end of the, of the other direction, is that the problem? Ask for a waiver on sidewalk, and the curb.
This is like, that's in, that's a walkway, right in the, their side.
It's a walkway, it's not a sidewalk? It's on the other side, it doesn't continue?
That goes into the, that's how, I think.
From where the, from where the sidewalk is coming out of the building, it doesn't go any further down Whitesville Road? There's nothing else there on the other side? Nothing. How is it with training in the front? How is it with training in the front, when it rains and it's raining?
It goes down the road.
And in fact, in parking, whatever else it is over there?
Parking hole.
That's all parked? I would open to the public, anybody for the public, like to be heard, please come forward. Signal, we'll close the public, I'll ask for a motion on this application.
I have a question, I'm just concerned, I want to make sure that trailer is done, in the way, maybe we can move it away.
Okay. They're testifying that the trailer is not there. So your motion...
Wrong thing on blue maps, updated, whatever it is.
Our sign is showing, we can just look at the side, that's alright, that trailer is there, that's existed, that's what it's there.
That, that show, trailer is showing north of the, of the tree, this is further into the parking lot, wherever that object is.
So they're testifying on record that there's nothing there.
I can put resolution, trailers are prohibited.
Well, no, the one in the back.
There's an existing trailer, that's, that's been there, and should...
I can't say you want that, okay, I miss where you're going.
And it's, it's used as storage area, uh, service the, the building.
I'm in, I'm in.
Okay. Save the moves, any other question? The furnace, what? If you want to make a second one? If you want the seconds, roll call, please.
I'm sorry, just a moment.
No problem.
Mr. Quintez?
Yes.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Klansbell? I'm sorry, Mr. Hertzel?
Yes, you sat down.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
And Mr. Raisin?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, will we continue back to number one, Chairman?
Yes, we had another right amount corresponded.
Yes, thank you very much, I'm so sorry.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to address the adjournment request on, I believe it's number nine?
Is that, continue?
Frank is here for number nine, um, kind of calling, seventy-two White Street, number nine, that's, that's called?
I thought I saw John Doyle.
Mr. Doyle was here?
John's here in the hall.
I, I think he is.
Is the attorney for opposition here?
I thought I saw Mr. Riley here, and I know, I, I spoke to, he's here for Mr. Gazaraski.
Unless they're talking outside, go through, trying to work it out.
John's question.
Okay, is Mr. Riley here too?
I think you were talking.
Yeah, I was there.
They talk together?
Okay.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Riley and Mr. Doyle, I note that we received a letter from Mr. Gazaraski on number nines. The application is twenty-three, forty-six AA, kind of called, and we want to, I, I see you're talking in the hall. Mr. Riley, is there still an adjournment request?
Yes, and frankly, uh, no, we're not into the sleep.
Alright, so please, uh, Mr. Chairman, can we address this adjournment request now? Can you please make your appearances for the record and then make your application for the adjournment?
John Paul Doyle, on behalf of the applicant, let me stay on, on my feet, and for Mr. Riley to speak. We were last on the agenda. As people who are familiar with the planning board's agenda, although the meeting starts at six o'clock, when somebody sees that they're later in the agenda, they may allow themselves to have dinner, prayer, or whatever, come at a more appropriate time. At this point, my find is in any way, it's, I'd rather make my case while I'm here.
Well, that's fair.
Alright, so you're ready to, uh...
I think that's why I asked you, that will give us here.
Okay, I, I knew they were in the hall, but, but you should, that's your choice, Mr. Chair. So I'll go and address this in a later time?
Okay, is that the board here? Okay.
I would note, if I may, uh...
Just identify something, we're good.
For my Riley, period before the objective, uh, property on the next store. Uh, I would maybe note to the, to the board council, if one of my objectives, uh, or when we receive the notice, the secondly, the notice itself, I'm going to make the same objection, the notice, per se, for factors, and you don't have jurisdiction of all the area. So I, I just tell you, so you could have an opportunity to look at the notice itself.
Thank you, so you can make that, uh, Mr. Doyle's claim, is there anything that you're ready to proceed? I'll be getting to number nine, perhaps.
Okay.
Here's, Mr. Chairman, Jackson members, uh, and there's a break in the action, uh...
Okay, we go over something else? Okay, so let's continue with the adjournment, there was, oh, there was correspondence.
There's a correspondence, I'm from SD twenty-three ninety-six, this is a, so basically a group subdivision, and a nine member effective file, we have to, is looking to amend, revise, the various, you don't have to respond to the question, I go to the other side.
Shh. Hold on, we just started. This is eighteen years too.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor of...
Yes, we'll answer the public's, uh, I'm sorry.
Any, 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 if you have anything to add on this? I'm just asking, I don't... Okay. It's what is the, a small minority, it's only recently? Uh, we were recently before this board, um, basically looking to add, make a footprint of the house, twenty-four point five feet, whereas twenty-three point two-five feet was previously approved. By doing that, it causes one or two small changes, I can't stand Brian, just walk me through, show you that change on the map.
Swear from testimony before the board, it's your call, two minutes.
I did, Brian Connor, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed special engineer, professional planner. I marked up the map, but the board remembers, this is the application that was on Route nine between Henry and Burge. One duplex on Henry and two on, on Burge. And we came in conforming with the ordinance with respect to lot areas and site setbacks, and, and conform with the ordinance with respect to the front setback to the existing structures on River Avenue. The, uh, structure on River Avenue that's on Henry Street was closer to Route nine than the one that was on Burge Street. So the application was originally submitted by the engineer using that, but what it ended up with, uh, the width of the duplexes on, uh, the Burge Street duplex were twenty-three point two-five feet. When he got his approval and went to the architect, the architect said, that, that's a very small, it's not going to be consistent with the neighborhood, if we had an extra two and a half feet, we would have units that are the same as the other side. You can see on the map, what I've done, as I've indicated in blue, what was approved, and what we're asking for is the pink, which is to move over, uh, one foot and change the middle lot line and, uh, two and a half feet the other line. It's setback still further than the joining one on Henry Street, so nobody's going to see this. So this, in, in my opinion, is the minimum speed, is something that if the applicant had realized that at the time that the original application was submitted, we asked for it at that time, if he didn't go to his architect to lay afterwards, and the architect said twenty-three, we used to say that, for years, you needed twenty-six feet of the furniture in, in the units. Uh, certainly at, at twenty-three point two-five feet, you have to get special furniture, the twenty-four and a half would be consistent with the other one.
How many more of that?
They're not, they're not getting any more better, okay, it'll be this, it'll be the same square footage, uh, just a, a foot wider and a little less deep, so, uh, and it'll be consistent with the other one. And I, I think the board knows this area, this is an area that, that has nice units, and twenty-three point two-five is going to be inconsistent with the area, and the, the biggest thing that I, I think makes it the minimus, and, and, and that it, it really should be no brainer, if anybody looking at it, it lines up with the other line, except that it's a little bit less than the other.
Any question, any board members? I would ask for motion, we don't have to talk in the public, uh, they do?
It doesn't hurt, since they sent notice.
We, we did notice. Okay. I would open to the public, anybody for the public, like to be heard?
Absolutely.
On... This, uh, this correspondence, yeah?
Please speak. Please, right, right, I do swear from testimony before the board, it's your call, two minutes.
I affirm, Moshe Zionis, the E I N S one-one-two, on First Boulevard, Lincoln, New Jersey, oh eight seven oh one. Just a quick question regarding this application, because there's an amendment over here. Maybe you can help us out, on the original R P E review, there was a comment about widening the, the, um, a little bit of the road of Henry and Route nine, with this? Okay. And it was only, was also, there was also like, um, sidewalk or for the curb, what was the other?
All of the original conditions are still valid, so we're not asking for any relief, we're just asking to make these limits twenty-four and a half feet wide, rather than that.
Wide, so there's no frontage issue?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much, have a good night.
Anybody else in the public, like to hear this before, signal, last, last promotion, application?
I'm ready to go.
Mr. Meyer, move. Last one seconds, you want to go, please?
Mr. Quintez?
Yes.
Mr. Garfield? Mr. Sable?
Stay.
Mr. Klansbell?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Raisin?
Yes.
Thank you. I have number one?
Just the number one.
Correct. SD twenty-eight-two for MC Tusk, need to proxy LLC, this is an amended preliminary final major subdivision, it was previously approved, it looks to me like the layout is pretty much the same, but there is an adjustment to the lots that are included as part of the application. Um, and there's changed, small changes to some of the setback variances that were previously...
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to use myself in this application.
Uh, Dave, you might go through the region? Yes, this is, um, amended subdivision, um, and what, uh, the scope of the, uh, project has changed, so that's why we're back here for an amendment. Um, it needs some additional lot area variances, originally this was approved with, uh, variances allowing minimum lot areas at twelve thousand square feet, uh, with fifteen thousand required, and this amendment will require additional lot area variances for four properties. All four properties would be less than, would be less than twelve thousand square feet, smallest of which would be about ten thousand four hundred square feet. The original approval also...
Get any more lots? Can I get any more lots?
No, no additional lots. What, and, and I'm sure, uh, Mr. Quarland will, uh, your testimony is, what, what has happened, um, the scope of the project has changed in the sense that it goes out to the west to, uh, Boulder Street, and it's also changed in the sense that the, uh, county, uh, the county road, um, is required additional right-of-way, take, and what take, and additional policy I approved for when it came to this board. So that, that's why we're here for the amendments, okay?
That's why I asked for any additional lots?
Right, 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 no, no, there's not, there's not a change in the number. They're just, they're just smaller, the variances are, are, uh, more intense than the original approval.
Because the county's doubling up some of the right-of-way?
Yes.
How many feet?
We did a test on, go for testimony, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't remember, I don't recall what it was in the beginning, but, uh, it's probably about ten more feet than before, before the, when I was about to reach the minimum lot, lotway variances. Seventy-eight were originally approved, and the, uh, the end lots, uh, are now proposed at sixty-eight point four eight feet because of the additional right-of-way. Then, the, uh, the other thing that's needed is, uh, minimum front yard setback variances. Front yard setbacks are fifteen feet from East County Line Road are proposed for new lots one oh one and one point one oh, and these are one ninety-five.
These are local variances?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And front yard setbacks of sixteen point six feet are proposed, is still well, they have to be for new lots one point oh five, one point oh six, in block one, one ninety-five. And also a front yard setback, twenty-four feet are proposed for East County Line Road for new lot one point oh one in block one ninety-four, and new lot five point oh one in block one ninety-seven. And all instances, thirty feet are required. And then the last, um, item is a design waiver, and what that is for, uh, Bogart Street all the way to the west is unapproved, and they will have frontage on Bogart Street, and they're requesting a design waiver from, uh, improving Bogart Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to get the applicant. Uh, I know it sounds like there's a lot happening here, um, but really, a lot of this is, as I indicated, which is caused by the county coming in, making a little more go, they, they changed the minds. We had enough that previously, we did take into account their original plans, they came back and said, wait a second, we're changing this a little bit more, uh, and that's what causes basically these two variances. Additionally, under the previous, uh, application, the weapon delineation line was the estimate line, whereas now it's actually the, the exact line, and caused a few other changes. If I can, at this time, swear in, uh, Mr. Quarland?
You swear from testimony, if you want to talk to the truth, go, go, do the math. I do. Grant, I'm for all the personal, here, personal file, I'll listen to you.
Yeah, hey, Charlie, we can, Grant, as the board, board of the U.S. Association?
Thank you.
And Grant, if you have anything, Charlie, what, the reasons?
Sure, A one is, um, is the development plan of the original application that was approved. This is a plan with the revision date of November eleventh, um, two thousand fifteen. This plan shows the original application that was approved by the board, uh, in December of two thousand...
Is she there?
This is the development plan from the originals, no, this is from the original, just giving you a little, little background. This plan showed twenty lots, uh, to, to the, the new post. It showed, um, the lots was funded on County Line Road, and it showed the dedication required by the county at that time. At that time, the county was requesting a dedication to a twenty-five foot, um, hamlet. The county has since, county master plan has since been updated, so the county now requires additional, uh, three six. Well, it actually required forty-three in their master plan, but we didn't go lead with the county's... county's rationale, which said that forty-three would really be a hardship to this application and have significant impact. And the county, we talked to them, and they agreed to accept thirty-six-foot hamper dedication here. So that's the reason why the variances are created, that, that, that created a hardship for these variances. Next, I'll refer to, refer to the cover sheet that was submitted with these revised plans, that mark eight-two. This, you'll see, the original parcel, again, the original development highlighted in the tan or the light orange color. And the blue are the new portions that have been added based upon the final assemblage that had been done by my client, requiring all the layers to put the whole project together. Essentially, you can see that there are two pieces on the western edge of the, of the track, in part of Lot Five and part of Lot Eight, that have been added to the project to result in a final, a final four. The next exhibit is A-three. And A-three is the development plan that was submitted to the board with the application. She built thing I've done, this is she number, number three, of the plan set.
Is the chart about, right?
The chart on the bottom...
Those charts, these lots, less than twelve thousand?
The chart on the bottom, unfortunately, those four lot areas are not updated on the chart.
Okay, so they are small. Because the one says that's all four thousand.
Correct. I'll run through them real quick. That, you can see on A-three, we have four lots identified for which new variances are requested.
On the, on the lot itself, it says that's ten thousand five hundred.
Correct. Those are the correct areas.
Okay, so the bottom chart, this is in the...
Correct. So those four lots that have frontage along County Line Road will range from ten thousand to five point three, up to eleven thousand one thirty dollars square feet. Those, those four lots. The other lots in the project will all remain available at twelve thousand, which is consistent with the original approval landing.
Basically, any changes of, of those four lots?
Correct. It won't change our post, those four lot, four lot, well, I'll, I'll make a little, a little caveat. Again, referring to A-one, you can see the home that was on, was previously identified as Lot Five point oh-two, sitting way on the western edge of the, you don't have that by the southern property to exhibit in A-one. This one lot was pushed way back, and the one houses were pushed way back based on the geometry at the time the plan was approved. We now, we don't have that condition anymore. We have four lots, funding eye on Bridge Street, which all been, you know, located, you know, all funded between the old or the old section. So that lot with that house being pushed way back has also been, has been reconfigured and is no longer a part of, part of the application. But, you know, big picture, it was twenty lots originally, still twenty lots, impacted by the changes to the category plan that require us to dedicate additional right-of-way. So required by that additional dedication, our adjustments to the lot sizes, and then the other variances that are requested for the lot width for the two interior lots, and then the front yard setback variances, essentially treating those four lots as side loads were requested, not side loads. That allows those homes to be constructed to similar size to the other homes that have been proposed.
What is that, the blue and orange, is white, lot seven, lot four?
Those are not part of the application right now. Client was not able to obtain the lots in assembly, the property, they're not part of the application.
So what's the blue?
The blue, the blue on, on A-two represents the additional pieces that were added as compared to the original, original approval. The original approval was just for the lots that are in the, in the tan or the light orange.
Why did you, why did you need to acquire those?
Well, they didn't need to acquire those, but this pro, this property was, was required by the assemblage to, to make, took the lots together. Our client went to various landowners to acquire all the pieces to assemble it, to put this application together. When we got the original approval, those two pieces weren't included in the application.
And no, no lots, no additional lots would be created?
No additional lots.
So why can't buy then? What is, what does that, how's it helping? Just, I'm just trying to understand.
Well, I, I can't, I can't tell you the complete history, but I know that my, our client spent, you know, still a lot of time trying to buy the properties to put, you know, put a parcel together to make, make the development. As a standard today, this is what he's made up to acquire, and that's the application that, that we're presenting.
So if they get some more, they could come back and have it?
There isn't much more, okay.
Well, referring to, referring to A-three, I'm going to show, show the whole of my head. You see a line here, that's the limit of the category one, or area one, which is where the people are top staying. So anything else that lies below that line, you know, essentially not, not called?
Does we not create two thousand?
Yeah, it does, it does have this particular lot, the bottom lot, Lot Five point oh-four, it does have a land area of thirty-one thousand square feet, those are the outside mine for area buffer. And they would have, they'd have to do a deed, you know, for a special person to do anything, and they'd have to sign a lot. And that's also the reason why we're asking...
Didn't just buy one. He didn't, he didn't, he didn't...
Well, okay, he did go through the assemblers process, put in, put in the entire contract and the location, most of which is not fact, he has to...
Without this, so maybe he needed to go on, so he didn't want to buy this, the actual location. Nothing more.
Okay. And while we're talking about the, talking about the area of area buffer, that's also the reason why we're asking, of course, asking for the design, for the improvement of Bogart Street, along the properties that have frontage in front. You can see our new lot, five point zero-four, you have a hundred feet of frontage, which is what you call with it, category one, all purpose. And then our new lot, five point oh-three, that's forty feet of frontage, lying, most of the way down, that means Bogart's required. You know, we haven't been sent to...
Am I correct in saying that, because in the category one buffer, even if we wanted to improve it, we have the first official purpose of the E-bay?
Correct.
Not to give you, or the white, the green, the orange, and the blue, we need a funny option, property, the lot.
Well, our current A-two, lot four, and lot seven, there's no, no, this lot.
Four, two lot, five oh-four.
Well, if you look at, if you look at the cover sheet out there, you know, the mark eight, you know, if you look at the cover sheet, this map, it's, it's, it's on the cover sheet, that lot four, and lot seven are almost some, they're all under our control.
Some of their, some of their...
Correct.
Not for us.
Not for us. So, so, possibly all by somebody else.
He's, he's...
He's not the lot, the lot number one.
Mr. Sable, can I back you?
He used to be owned by the same owner as property, that lot number one, block one, nine, seven, holding down, and you can see the location.
It's not this, may, may not have...
It is showing that property owner of lot one, for some reason, decided to sell the half of his property to this owner. He spent money for this, so the question is why, why he did. He didn't just spend money chartering it.
And it's really kind of using my client right towards seven, so he's...
Creating a very archaic, two, two lots, unbuilt at all.
Those are existing lots.
Those are existing lots.
They're just, they're just lots.
Correct. They're just lots.
Correct.
This is, this is what we can do. Lot seven, lot four, I mean, or seven, they're just that little finger, the...
Yeah, true.
That's it. I was asking about today.
Not sure, but yeah, though.
Oh, they're, they're on there.
Is that the lot?
Yes, they're on there.
Yes.
There's...
So we're not creating now that, on the share?
No, no, I'm not creating that. That's existing today, on the back.
And then also, we, we, we have new variances on the first of all lots, those are counted away from, and, and, and everything stays the same with the original.
Correct.
Did anyone, did anyone, did anyone?
My, my, Mr. Horton. I also had an opportunity to meet, still also have a portion of the R here this evening. I should have, tonight, should have agreed part of the conversation of this application that should the board approve this prior to any clearing that occurs, possibly because of the C-one buffer. We will first go out in Mark and run up the fences prior to, start that, so we can start that, and not clear to these authorities. That's the only thing we're back. We also agree that for the bottom, for these lots, and anybody that gets touches the C-one buffer, that we would provide notice in the contract, especially for these two, that they're packed there, and obviously, you don't have to have, again, they have to go to the E-bay. And third, I, I said, this dirt roads, that would be street, I guess, still won't happen.
Still won't?
Still won't, yes. And they asked for dollars to be installed between, I believe it's, Aiding, Stillwell, Briggs, and Stillwell, so that dirt roads, again, dirt lines, lots of cones through there. And, again, this case, it's built as a home anyway, it's in the C-one buffer, of Stillwell and, and this application is agreed with the board, so if we, that we would put some dollars up, and that was just...
Does this open up onto County Line?
County Line?
On top.
Is on top.
Right. And you have an exit onto County Line?
It was, it's a pass, if we're going to pull in, Aiding, Stillwell, Briggs, but I'm down.
Currently, the way it is right now, those streets aren't existing, right?
They...
I don't know if they're paid, I don't want to say.
Saying they're not being used by regular vehicles?
The best of my knowledge.
So what, what do they plan for this large area? This is all development? This, how many houses are you putting into this lot?
This is twenty single-family houses.
Twenty single-family houses. And County Line, there is one-lane intersection?
As far as...
Yes. Has there been a traffic study done to see how that, what impact area there?
Traffic study was done, but private, first, they approved, has been reviewed by the county, and is that...
And with these additions they are putting in, same number of houses?
No, no additional houses.
So he's changing the size of the lots?
There is a, um, the county, they said we wanted to go for, going for, after wide County Line Road, based on that, create...
And when was that approval given?
Original approval was adopted in December of two thousand and fifteen.
Two thousand and fifteen?
Right, right, it was adopted. Oh, we've, we're, since then, with the county, go back to the original plan.
So you don't have to go back to the county for anything regarding this?
Uh, we, we had, we had resubmitted this application to the county in, at, a few months, and they approved it subjectively, which satisfied our recommendation.
So they ready to do that?
So the, the, you're, what are you asking for on Bogart? I think you're asking for a waiver of doing any road improvements, but yes, can I?
Yes, on, on Bogart, as you can see with, in A-three, that was very much from the location of the plan. Technically, this application does have street frontage on Bogart, which is an unapproved street. Those technically, technically, we're going to require applicants to improve those street fronts. And there's, there's two pictures, there's one at the bottom, you have a hundred footer frontage, but that's solely taken in category one. On two, you have a little strip that's forty feet wide, which was, you know, two hundred feet off the, off the County Line Road. Doesn't make any sense to me, because somebody fell there and approved forty feet of, of the road that's not serving it.
I think it's...
Again, it's...
So if you guys were to buy that finger, could you do something about that?
Yes, if our client was able to buy lot four and lot seven, we won't, we would be able to buy lot four and lot seven. We, we, we probably come back and ask for a minor subdivision, get another lot, or, you know, whatever, and bring it up. Yes, for, that's right, it would be one additional, fully, four lots.
But when, where would that exit to, that house?
That would be on Bogart Street, which would have to then...
Everything goes to County Line?
It would be on, on Bogart, because, again, the original area, they would have to improve from County Line to the part that happens.
So by granting your waiver now, or not vesting it, that if you buy the finger, then you say, well, you approve, we don't have to do any sidewalks?
No. And, and, it's a road that goes...
Not to be cynical.
No, it's, it's a road that goes nowhere, that would go to the backyard of the...
Okay, that doesn't make sense.
Correct.
One single house to live.
But they're all access roads to County Line. So, okay, all these things, there's nowhere, where else to go, going south. Everything just as an access to County Line, like a long driveway, in other words.
Well, we have, we have a, essentially, essentially a loop road, two, two access roads to County Line.
Can we wait? Four, five, seven, seven, five, seven, and lot seven, lot four, it's not on the list, probably on the, on the, the lady, on the, on the, on the, on the...
I think it's in the, in the list of the...
What, I just have a little lot more, how many lots?
I think he said the lot one, is it?
Let's see.
It's Robbyville, which is, during, here.
There we see him.
You have lot one, lot two, that'll be on the lot one, County Line, and...
It's not the County Line?
Four, lot two is, I think, a little bit with, off the forehand.
Oh, this is...
This is, you have, you have, you have a good number? Correct. So I, with, with the, with the, I asked the family for a list, others have to be updated as we, as we, as we, updated the list. They provided, that's why the goal list, lot two. The one, the lot two, provided for the...
The one's lot seven is four.
Lot four is passed over today, and lot seven is also passed over.
Yeah, no problem.
It's only lot seven, I don't, I don't believe it. All right, so this, now with the...
It's Ronald Ronco, I represent the owners, lot one, like you said, lot one.
Mr. Ronco, can you spell your last name?
Certainly, it's W.R.O.N.K.O.
Thank you.
I do have, I do have some follow-up questions for the engineer. First, just for clarification, on Bogart Street, if you proceed down Bogart Street away from County Line, you would be heading into the riparian zone, is that right?
Correct.
And it's a C-one riparian zone. Now, there wasn't a riparian zone disturbance plan prepared for this application, is that right?
Correct, because those are supposed to be riparian zones.
Okay, so let's talk about that. With regard to the two houses that are furthest away from County Line, can you put the original application up?
I think you're referring to A-one, the original development plan?
Right. And in that original development plan, it shows the riparian zone going through the two houses, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And if we go to the revised riparian zone line, it shows the riparian zone making a right-hand turn around these buildings and then heading down. And I note, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're relying on a survey that was created by New Lines Engineering that dates back to November seventh, two thousand and eighteen, and then revised on December nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, is that right?
Uh, well, there's a little bit of mystery to establishing that, the exact location of that, of that buffer. My office had also performed a survey to identify where that line fell, and then our surveyor and their surveyor worked together to determine the exact location, and that's what reflected on, on the...
Well, let's back up. For the original plan that you had submitted for approval here, there was an indication that it was estimated, so you didn't go out and, and survey this, you submit this to the board without properly delineating the, the riparian line?
The line shown on A-one was an estimatable line, was not based upon a detailed field survey.
Okay, so there was no detailed field survey. When did you conduct a detailed field survey for this revised plan?
For A-three, I believe, I believe it was in last year sometime, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, just, just sometime last year.
On top, two thousand and eighteen, is the question.
But in reference to your plan, you make no reference to you conducting the field study, you make reference only to relying on the New Lines Engineering, is that correct?
Well, we, we, we was... Well, we, we used, we utilized both sources, because New Lines was also requested by my, by, by my client to confirm the location of that stream, that riparian buffer. My understanding, they had to do some survey work on other parcels in the area as well, so they were hired by, by our clients to also provide information relative to where that line is. My surveyor and their surveyor resolved the location of that line, and that's now reflected on my...
Well, your application makes reference to surveys that were done at the end of 18, as to lots 1.01 and lot three of block 207, which is to the west of this project, is that right?
Um, can you, can I ask that question again?
Sure. The New Lines survey relates to block 207, lots 1.01 and three, which is to the west of this application, isn't that right?
Uh, I believe, so yes, you can see those on A3, they're on the western edge of that.
Are you aware that New Lines had submitted that application and then withdrew it after my firm had submitted to them our own survey that reflected that their line was wrong?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay, so you contend that that's the correct riparian line?
The line that's shown on A3 is an accurate representation of where the 300-foot upper is located, related to both the property and the top of bank.
Now, if you were right the first time, wouldn't there then have to be as part of this application, a riparian zone disturbance plan?
Well, I think I was clearly indicating that on A1, the line that we had depicted at that time in 2015 was not based upon the detailed survey, and that was an estimated line, that was shown at that time.
Okay, but just answer my question, if in fact that was an accurate line, it would have to be a riparian zone disturbance plan.
Well, my answer to the question, my answer to the question is that that line was not, was not a depiction of a field survey.
That doesn't answer the question, and the question is, if that line was accurate, would that require a riparian, a plan as the...
If, if the project was frozen activity within the riparian buffer, regularly, the park would be required.
So, but then, is that then correct, that if that first survey was accurate, you would have to file?
Well, but that wasn't a survey. That line was estimated from other sources, and, and at the time when that plan was prepared, that top of bank had not been surveyed, located, tied into the property, property.
I'm sorry, Mr. Magnus.
The answer to the theoretical question would be yes.
What sources did you rely upon on the original plan that you're now indicating that you rely upon?
I did prepare the map first, so that I can fill those for that question.
Was this board notified that that was only an estimated line as opposed to a precise line when, when you came before them and gave sworn testimony with regard to that plan?
Mr. Ronco, your questions are all appropriate questions, but you're putting three, three of them together, two of them together, please answer them one at a time, because you're, you know, you're setting up a premise that Mr. McFarlane may or may not agree to, so do the questions in, in one segment at a time, thank you.
Additionally, I also should like to object, you're asking questions regarding previously approved approval, that is valid, and those on the deal are not.
Well, that's why I asked him, because he asked him, that's what he testified to, I don't know if he did or he didn't, so I just break it down into individual components, please, so Mr. McFarlane can answer each of them, thank you.
Sir, you gave testimony for the original approval of this application?
I did not testify.
Okay. Let me ask you, with regard to this application, does it provide for deed restrictions for those extended lots that now go into the riparian zone?
I, I don't believe the board requires additional, the board certainly has a right to require that of this application that you...
But now, this amended application is actually with regard to block 197, lot five, and with regard to block 198, lot 10, now has backyards going into the riparian zone, isn't that right?
Yes, some of the parts of those properties are in the riparian zone.
And am I correct that none of the existing vegetation is going to be touched or impacted by the buildings that are being constructed where they're, where they are very close to that riparian zone?
That's correct. This application as submitted does not propose any, any disturbance to the riparian zone.
And then, let me ask you about lot eight, which is the property, which is the little, I'm sorry, let me withdraw, let me rephrase. When we're looking at block 197, lot eight, that's below where my, my clients currently reside, that's going to be an unapproved lot, is that right?
Uh, no, lot, lot, what's the existing lot eight will be incorporated into new lot 5.03 as shown.
And to what benefit to the applicant is adding that lot?
It's just, it's just part of the parcel.
So as part of the parcel, is the applicant going to level all the trees on that heavily wooded lot?
No.
So what, are all those trees going to remain as is?
However, the plans we submitted show the needs of clearing the hogs.
Okay, so...
So we are not proposing clearing that portion of, of new lot 5.5.3. You see, he had a great plan to submit, you'll see a little bit of clearing, which is, I'm sure it's thirty or forty feet off the back of the house. So that question portion of lot 5.03 will remain unimproved.
With regard to traffic, is there, at this point, been a determination as to whether it's one-way traffic or two-way traffic going around Brigs on to Stillwell and back out to county line?
This is a public street design according to our science standard, which lies with two-way traffic.
So this lot, you would agree with me, is in close proximity to the intersection of Broken County Line, is that right?
Yes, they're also in close, yes.
Okay, so you could potentially have people going in and out of both of these egresses on the county line at the same time?
We could.
Okay, has there been any analysis done as to rush hour traffic at five o'clock? Let me ask the question, at five o'clock in the afternoon, as to having traffic coming out on both of those egresses in the same direction?
We did not prepare the traffic study, traffic study was prepared by the traffic engineer, it was submitted to the county and accepted.
But there's been no amendment to the traffic study for this application, is that right?
Uh, I'm not...
Has there been any amendment to the environmental impact study, or has there, let me withdraw, was there an environmental impact study?
I don't think there was one. Natural...
Has, is there a reason why an environmental impact study has not been done in light of the very close proximity to a 300-foot C1 riparian zone?
Well, there's no way back to your riparian zone. There's no way back to, to that last track on the property, that, or...
Well, as part of the application, you have a stormwater runoff plan, is that right?
Oh, we do.
Okay, and as part of this application, you have a soil erosion plan, is that right?
We do.
Okay, so that has not been all part of a unified study to ensure that soil erosion and water runoff is not going to impact the riparian area, is that right?
Uh, no, I just agree with that statement. I had to compare it for state tables, to stormwater and for soil contamination, and satisfied, while we were at...
I would like to make a statement at the appropriate time, I can do that there in the public comment section, if that's appropriate.
Mr. Ronco, I, I just have a couple of questions, just to, while we're on the subject. Of you ended up, Mr., you indicated, Mr. Ronco, if I understood your question, you indicated that, indicated that your client has a survey that shows the riparian buffer in a different location?
There was an application for the development of block 207, lots 1.01 and three. Our survey was limited only to where the riparian zone fell on, fell in those lots. I'm unaware of any New Lines engineering plan that the engineers are referring to, none was attached to these plans, it's simply indicated by reference, but we had submitted our own plan relating to lots 1.01 and three of block 207, and then after we submitted that, that application to develop those lots was withdrawn.
But I, maybe I just misunderstood your question, but I thought you said, don't you agree that our riparian survey showed the line in a different location, and that you spoke to Mr. McFarlane, so that, do you have a riparian buffer line that's different than this, that you're prepared to submit into evidence?
I don't have a copy of what we have submitted to enter into evidence this evening. What I am representing is that the riparian line that was different was on lots 1.01 and three of block 207.
Well, I'm having a hard time picking that up, just from looking from the snap, I don't know where, but you talked about...
Sure, and that is to the west of the water.
It might be, the lots, the lots you referred to on that A3, I believe, are lot one and three, which are west of the subject property, not part of the application.
Okay, the reasonable message is, you seem to be making an issue as the accuracy and authenticity of this riparian buffer line, and if you have another survey that shows it in a different location, I think the board would like to see that, and if you don't have it, then I think, you know, the board may want to move on.
Well, as I indicated, Mr. Jackson, what I do have, and I don't have it with me, is a survey that relates only to block 207, lots 1.01 and three, which is what this apparently makes reference to. So if, if in fact, he's relying upon a survey that shows an extension of that riparian line that goes all the way out to these other lots, because by its own definition within the citation, it's relating only to block 207, lots 1.01 and three, which is to the west of this application.
Thank you, I just want, and I have a question for Mr. McFarlane, your permission, Mr. Chairman, how is the riparian buffer line established? Is it by a means and bounds description, is it on environmental DPD, is it based on field conditions? Well, when you said your surveyors went out and you conferred, and you reestablished the line, was it a survey error, or you actually went out and looked at field controls? Please explain how that works.
The, the category line was established from the top of the string bank. So we went out and we had to survey the top of the string, string bank, as you can see, part of it, part of that line is shown on A3 here, that line extended a lot further down, just doesn't show on this one, this riverbank. So our guys went out and looked, you know, put a bunch of shots along that top bank and string, and we plotted relative to the, the property line, and then we went from that top bank, bring the piece to a DPD, that establishes the riparian buffer. When we did, did that, the riparian line ends up where you see, depicted on the plan then. Again, when we had to give a permit to A1, when the plan was approved in 2015, that top of the bank was not filled with, was not specifically located far enough along, so this line was estimated when this plan was submitted back.
How, how do you know that, that it was estimated?
Because I know, because our survey didn't extend that far. It was only surveyed approximately to what shows on, on A1, over here, and then we looked at error map, we looked at line map, estimated the line here, submitted that to the original approval.
All right, so the, the survey and the information that you have up there, it's your testimony, that's based on the latest information, signed by a surveyor, and then out and did actual field measurements, and that's what that line is.
Correct, and that surveyor was your friend who wanted to...
All right, thank you, I just wanted to understand, because sometimes it's, you know, DPD aerial map and different kinds of...
No, this was site-specific information, survey of the top of bank, applied to the property area, and then three other...
Thank you, and Mr. Chairman, thank you for your indulgence, I just want to...
Chairman, thanks. Yes, so, sorry, what's your name, sir?
Mr. Ronco.
Mr. Ronco, okay, so, did you state that the two lots down here, new lot 10.02 and lots 10.01, so now the line goes right behind, based on this new information, did you state that you have another recent survey that says the line goes through these houses?
No, sir, what I stated to Mr. Jackson is, the survey that I referred to was the one that, in the plans itself, it says that he's relying upon a existing 300-foot buffer taken from a plan entitled Top of Bank Plan, lot 207, lots 1.01 and three. Those lots are west of the plan, are west of the plan, they are over here. When that, when that application, because there was an application to develop those, we opposed that application, hired our own surveyor, and submitted where that riparian buffer entered those lots, and showed that they were inaccurate on that area. We have not, at this point, retained our own surveyor to address that area with those two houses, but there's a clear inconsistency between the plans.
And, sir, what's your name?
Mr. McFarlane.
Mr. McFarlane, can I ask a question?
Sure.
All right. So, just out of curiosity, how was the 2015 plan with the estimated line approved when, by your own estimation, it went right through the two houses?
Well, again, for, for A1, this, this, this line...
This is not for education, it got approved, and how did that happen?
The line on A1, again, we, we field survey did not extend far enough so that the line could be specifically identified. So when we prepared this map back then, we showed the line where we showed it, based upon an estimation where regardless, basically looking at aerials, looking at USGS quad maps, looking at other information, so we put that line on the plan. And this plan had actually identified that individual flood hazard program would potentially be required to allow those lots to be developed as shown on A1. So when we prepared this amended plan, we said, you know, well, we really got to figure out where this line is, whether we need or don't be determined, we were exactly where the line is, going back and forth, amended the rules, hit this all tie-up, sent my guys out, and at the same time, you know, New Lines had to do some work in the area, so our surveyor, frankly, had to gather with their surveyor to make sure all the job he was doing, that the property lines all fit together relative to the stream. So we ended up with an exact depiction of where the line lies today.
So even though New Lines mostly withdrew their submission, you still stand by your assessment of this?
Well, we had, we had shared some information with New Lines to get the exact location of the stream buffer and this riparian buffer located relative to the property.
So you don't feel a new survey is required?
No, it's already, it's, it was included part of the process.
And then, the other attorney feels that a new survey is required?
Yes.
I think it's different application, not the application that you're seeing here tonight, not the application that was approved.
But there's obviously some concern for people who are in the area who, who hired him, that think that there's an issue.
Mr. Ray, sir, the applicant has done the survey, and that's the survey that we're relying on. Right now, there is no competing survey.
Why was it withdrawn by New Lines?
No, it wasn't withdrawn. But our engineers...
I think we had to bog, bog it down on an issue that we could solve very simple. The 300-foot riparian buffer just has to be established in, on the map, with survey information, radiuses, lengths, bearings, distances, and tied to the property, and that should be a condition of your approval, that that information, so that line is, can be established in the field, and so that it can't be crossed. It's, it's really that simple. The attorneys are, and the engineer, they're arguing about something that, that doesn't have the numbers on it yet, so, so...
Technically...
It's not getting by us or you until that's done.
If that line is not replaced, it's...
If it's wrong, if it's wrong, it's going to be back here anyhow, or it loses the lot maybe because it can't build it.
Because it can't build another lot.
You know, something like that's going to happen.
That was the original, when we came forward, the board, the original application, which I represented, we understood that that lot, those towns, those footprints could not get built, but now either A, the DPD, or B, clarify exactly where the, the line is.
The question is only on those two lots. About two lots, 10.01, 10.02, the rest of the application changes.
And it was previously approved, we have always shown it now, but we, we prioritize where the actual line goes, because we're testing by our thresholds, that's it, there is no...
There's no counter, there's no... It's improved, I'm not sure if we're not getting the proper line. Now we have the proper line.
Yes.
That's what they're asking for. Okay, thank you.
Any other words, any questions?
I would go to the chairman.
Can you contact the local government?
Is it possible to make one of these streets, is there any way to make one of these streets toward one-way going off of county line, and then the other street, I guess Bogart could be a two-way street because it goes a little further south as well, but we're concerned about two streets exiting off the county line at once, is it possible?
It's directed to county, it's directed to one street, one side street, and I have a county, or the, the...
What, what is the distance from one street to the, to the next street, from Bogart to toward?
No, not towards.
I would open up the public now, and you come forward.
Good evening, thank you, thank you, it's nice to see you all. And I want to start by thanking Adam Pfeffer and Brian Flannery for a conference that we had with regard to this property. Sure, it's Catherine Stillwell, 950 Brook Road, Lakewood.
Were you represented by Mr. Ronco?
No.
I misunderstood that. Please raise your hand, you swear a firm testimony before the board with the truth, the whole truth, not the truth.
I do.
And Mr. Ronco, you represented whom?
I represent my parents, while I was in Parkland.
I apologize, I thought I heard Stillwell, I misunderstood.
First, I want to start by stating that I think there's been a little misrepresentation as far as where the county is in approval of this application. I spoke to the county today, to the county planning board, and they have not approved this application. They said that it has been, previously it was submitted and it was always found deficient, they never came back with what they needed to get the approval, and the last time they were before the county was in April. And in April, they had eight issues that were outstanding, and they have not been back since. So there's been no county approval on the roadway system. It is true about the change on the right-of-way, I don't disagree with any of that, but that has not been accepted by the county.
Our approval is subject to their county approval.
Excuse me?
Our approval, if we approve it, is subject to their county.
Yes, but when we're talking about the one-way roads, that is something that we brought up.
Let me just clarify, the county is one authority and we're another authority. The county makes it be one-way, but the county may take our input or may not take it.
Well, Thorpe is not a county road.
Pardon?
Thorpe is not a county road, that would be a county road.
Which one?
There's no Thorpe.
The question was about a one-way in and out of the county, off of the.
No, going off of the county road, that doesn't act the company then.
Yes.
They have jurisdiction.
They have jurisdiction. They're entering the intersection, but exiting from county road, that doesn't.
They, they have the jurisdiction, but we also have jurisdiction. The county, you know, might be influenced by a preference that the planning board might have, that's a local preference.
I think we'll be interested in both ways.
Well, that's a different issue.
So it is very close to the intersection of Brook Road and county line, and our concern is for the safety of the people that will be entering.
Which one is very close?
Well, the first one.
There's two streets.
The Bogart is close, but you don't really have much, I think it's Griggs. Griggs is the first one, and then Aiden is the second one. But they're both close to the Brook Road county line road intersection where the light is. And you're going to be having two-way traffic coming and going from two relatively close inner and outer streets. So, again, it's the safety of the people that will be living there, more than anything, that it makes sense to have one way in, one way out, which we were discussing with the county, and they seem to be interested in hearing that, so.
Which one you would suggest?
I would suggest one closest to the intersection be the way in, and the one furthest away be the way out.
That's what I'm representing, you would say Griggs should be going in?
Griggs should be one way in, and Aiden should be one way out. Right, so that was the comment that I wanted to make on that. I also wanted to talk about the riparian buffer. We want to make sure that that's deed restricted for the people purchasing there. I'm really concerned about those two lots where they show the, that corner of the homes is right where the riparian buffer ends. And that's pursuant to this particular survey, which I'm, after listening to the testimony, I'm not so comfortable that's exactly where they say it is. It seems a little convenient that it's right there at the back of the home, but.
It means the lot to be in the line.
Exactly, so, and I, I want to make sure that people understand that in that buffer, they can't clear anything, underbrush, trees, nothing. So they will have, they will have no backyard. So one of the suggestions that I made, that I don't think is, is being considered much, but would be to combine those two lots. Build one home and let the other lot, the side of that, serve as a backyard in some way for that family. Because I think you know, and I know, I've been.
Are you talking about all still one?
On, let the two on Stillwell, yeah, instead of having two, make it one. And that way, the one person can have the other lot area that's not in the riparian for their actual use. So that was a suggestion that we made, I don't know where that's going to go.
If a buyer's property, you don't look at, if they don't want a backyard.
Well, the, the problem I think with that is, and as a board member, I think you know this, people come in, they don't know, they buy the property, deed restricted, it's all of, they sign the mortgage, they get there, and the kids have nowhere to play. So then they're going to find out that they've got to go through this extensive process to get a permit to do anything in there, and/or they may be coming to you or the zoning board saying, hey, give us a break, we have no place for our kids to go. Who knows? Well, I'm saying that you, as a planning board, can plan ahead and.
But if you're requiring them to put it on the purchase sale, how is this going to be referred to? Maybe a lot of.
Well, I think that, I think it also should go on the purchase agreement, because this way, the people buying know at the time of sale, if you're going to keep it this way, that they can do nothing.
Well, if they have an attorney, attorney should read those deals.
If they, they don't have to have an attorney, you know, the purchase.
If they're selling.
Well, they may be, but I'm just, you know, you're the planning board, and I'm hoping that you're keeping an eye out for your residents, your, your future residents.
I mean, it's not a lot to use it, and it's not a lot to clear it. They can't, they can't.
There's no grass, there's no grass, it's weeds, briars, you can do nothing, right from their back door out.
If you're going to lay in this right now.
Correct, correct, and I.
They make your fence behind, so kids don't know it's high house, high grass.
They can't put any structures in there. So it's a riparian buffer.
Before this line, before the property. Their property grid, right in this.
If you look at the, if you look at the survey, you'll see that the, it goes right to the back corner of those two homes. So they walk out their back door, and they can do nothing. So that's why I'm saying, if you combined those two and gave them one home there, and had the other lot, which would really be like a side yard, but at least it would be a yard that could be usable for those residents.
Mr. Jackson, one second. Those two houses were approved originally. Not all.
On condition, on condition that we get a proper line, it's not.
What, what are we dealing with tonight? Just changing the front setback, the front hall room and the whole.
In other words, do we have standing to even do what Miss Stillwell suggested, or propose these kind of conditions?
It's a mental application, anything's on the table, you could look back, but the question is whether you want to. You know, were, were these issues vetted in the first hearing or not, and does it really make a difference?
I mean, we should not have the kids going playing in there, because there's nothing barrier or nothing from getting up and.
And why?
And I don't.
Yeah, I don't, what's, what's the issue? 300 feet away from maybe having a stream back.
No, if they have the grass, they can't do anything.
There's no grass.
I, I would have the applicant address that, how you, you know, the applicant engineer, how usable is this backyard?
But can, I mean, still, with your permission, can we, I'd almost like to hear the response to this idea, A, are you amenable to a deed restriction, and B, where will the little kitty study?
Two items, so, one, we have absolutely no objection for it to contract a sale. The backyard, obviously, you can't use, you can't go that even in DEP permit. If you go into a deed restriction, my, my concern, I got, I asked John, there is info here, he says, we have no problem telling him from the height, but deed restricted, you then need, of course, to undo it, so if they go for a, a DEP permit, that the DEPs allows it, which we'll have to try and talk about that process in a minute, to build a deck or patio, you don't have deed restriction, you have to go to court to get that ready, you know, the DEP says you're allowed.
They're not going to go to the DEP for the, for the deck.
Well, I, I don't know, I don't know what this riparian line means in terms of how usable your yard is. I don't, I don't know, you know, sometimes you put fence in it, we haven't had any testimony to say that that.
Mr. Jackson, the line is right of, running up to the house.
I'm looking at it, right, right.
So we did surveying line.
How many feet is that?
How many feet?
Yes, they just got.
We surveyed one.
There's nothing.
John, we surveyed one.
It's like grass.
So, Ross, what do you?
Swear a firm testimony before the board with the truth, the whole truth, and then.
I do, Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. So, as Adam has indicated, and we did have a conversation with the Stillwells prior to the, to today, and the issue of that came up, and the, the fair thing to do is, and, but notify the buyers of these conditions, because there are buyers that wouldn't be okay without having a backyard. My house, that goes up to a 300-foot buffer also, I have no grass in my backyard, I'm the happiest guy young.
I feel old.
Yes. I'm wonderful. And I think another possible solution, if the board feels that there should be some area in the back, is we could request a front yard setback variance, and move the houses up a little, and then we'll leave a little area in the back. It, it's, the two lots, if you look at where they are, there's going to be nobody else around, you, you see where the 300-foot buffer is, it, it certainly leaves the rear yards, and when I was a kid growing up in South Amboy, we had probably 10 feet of grass in the back, and behind that we had woods. I was never on the grass, we were in the woods. I, I think, I, I know the particular site, Tony Mannick used to live there, I visited Tony, that, that's a beautiful area to walk, the only thing you'll see back there, and Mrs. Stillwell indicated, the briars, and you can see deer, there's deer back there, it's, it's a beautiful place. So, we're talking about two lots that were approved this way initially, that were not doing anything to change them, and two lots that if the buyers are notified when they're coming in, that this is a, a condition, and this is what they have, and if the board really feels you need more area in the back, the 20-foot setback there, nobody's going to notice, that to me would be a de minimis exception. I, I think it's good the way it is, the way it was originally approved, but if the board feels something needs to be done, that would be my recommendation. The other issue that Mrs. Stillwell indicated was making the road one-way, and, and as we indicated to her, the applicant would have no problem with that. There's arguments both ways, if the county is happy with it, one, one way in and one way out, if the applicant is happy to go along with the wisdom of the board, the wisdom of the county, and, and the requests of the neighbors. The applicant is in this position because late last year, they changed the right-way width in the master plan from 60 feet to 86 feet. So that's a 13-foot increase on each side. If, if this application had been finalized sooner, the houses would have been built, and, and the county would have had to pay for that extra area, and, and the houses would be closer to the road. The applicant, by taking the long time doing this, has actually provided an opportunity for the board to have some input, and, and for the county not to have to pay for the right. Thank you.
Can you school put any process that would be for these homes, if you wanted to, if you can see one, a proper area?
Well, they, they would have to apply for an individual permit to the DEP.
Is it possible the DEP will give them?
I, I, I think it's possible, and, and a lot of factors are going to enter into it. It's going to be the, the, the type of environmental conditions in the area, it, it'd be a lot of work to go into it. Me, I, I wouldn't even bother, it's, and I think the two, two families that would buy these houses would be the two that are, are not looking to have a big backyard. You talk about recreation, the Brook Road Sports Complex, it is right around the corner. Ocean County Park is not far away, and, and again.
As country.
Yes, but, I mean, as, as a kid that, that played in the woods, those woods that are there, and that whole area, with that whole 300-foot buffer, and, and, I'm trying not to get started up on the 300-foot buffer, because that was an arbitrary number picked out of the air by somebody on, on, but that's the number that we're stuck with, but that creates more than a 600-foot wide swath of open space and, and that's a recreation area.
I'm sure that we've stepped up, it's still lost sometimes.
So just a couple of comments on Brian. We live in the area, we hear the kids, we see the kids in the surrounding areas, we're happy that they're there, I mean, they bring life to the neighborhood. They need a backyard. I mean, I think it's absolutely silly to say that they're going to walk out their back door and have, they, they can't have nothing. You know, so, it's, it, I hate to put it, it's your community that's going to be living there, and your families that are going to be living there, and you're going to be hearing from them when they can't do anything in their backyard. So, these are just points I'm bringing to you, because I live there and I feel that it's a responsibility for good quality of life for the people that are there.
What do you think about Brian's idea of moving the front setback?
Well, I find that interesting, because Brian neglected to mention that the real setback is supposed to be 30 feet, correct?
Yes.
And so it went from 30 feet to at least 20 feet in the last one, in the last application, and now it would be, now it's down to 16, and so I'm not sure how much further back.
But, those particular lots are shown in the 30-foot setback, the 16-foot setback is to the lots that are on the roadway side of Stillwell, and those who were approved at 16 feet led to, those are side yards, that was approved, and Marion's list of grasses for this time are only for the lots that are shaded and blue among county. The other lots that remain at 16 were approved because it was a side yard, remain at 16. These lots on this side of the street, and you can see on the map, they're already setback 30 feet. So what happened was, I said, that would be consistent with going to the other side, you'd expect 16, and that would give a 14.
So is that going, is that going to set a precondition for future development down further on the, on other lots, if that road goes through, then those others could be 16?
Every lot comes in and, and they present the facts, the census, the detriment, and you can see the stream, the 300-foot buffer line that's going is the burden away from county line road as it goes down. So any of the lots that came in down the street, they would show where the 300-foot buffer line, and they would provide their information, they would hire a mayor grant, and we would stand up and, and we would testify. There's no precedent that would be set by granting that, and it would be consistent with these lots across the street.
So these, as they're shown here, are 20-foot setback?
30-foot setback.
This is 30-foot setback?
Yeah, 14-foot.
Okay, so, all right, so you're saying that you would move them up approximately 10 feet?
And that would make them. I just upped it to 14, because it's 10 foot across the street. If we talk about it a little longer, I really think 10 is okay.
I'm sure you do.
No, I, in that particular case, I, I do think 10 would be okay.
Well, except I think it's a precedent for the new one street, and I think that would.
But if, if, if you don't do one of those on the street, or the west, or, or your house, because the, the, the stream part of the water, and, and for the, for the application to get on the, anything else?
The, the only, so I just want to get the three things I'm asking for. One is that you do do a deed restrictive, restriction, and that it is noted in the sales contracts, I think that's important for your purchasers. The one way in and one way out, I think, is extremely important. And these two lots should really be addressed in some fashion that's going to give a better quality of life to people that are purchasing them.
Yeah.
I agree, or, I, another record that we weren't.
Just.
Just, and, we see on both ends of Stillwell are at, and both of the paper streets that head into the C1 buffer.
Thank you.
Anybody else's public rights, please come forward. What would be on the end of the streets, would it?
Allers would be 20, so.
Carshen.
Vehicles, EVs, that, that kind of.
What happens if you, do you have the authority to put those in the public right-of-way now?
We would, we would have to request the township allow that, and, and certainly, just like we're, we're amenable to, yes, going to county, make it one-way, we're amenable to, yes, the township. I, I certainly don't see that the township would have any problem, certainly on the can that goes into the C1 buffer, I, I can't imagine there's any problem on the, on the two paper streets, in my opinion, they should really be making, because they're, they're not going anywhere, but that may create some, a lot, even though they're unusual lines. In the other direction, if, if somebody calls, they.
But that corner, lot 101, could be, no, that corner, you can see.
Yes, lot 101 can be.
Can you unput sidewalk on your side? Or?
We're, we're going to put sidewalk. We're going to put sidewalk on both sides of the street.
On both, and that's...
Well, we're...
On Lot 101.
We're going to stop ours at the right-way.
Lot 101, go to the south, on both?
The board wants us to go halfway across the street, we'll go halfway across the street. Falling, there's no chance that's going to get the belt. So we stop it as though falling could be so. Yeah, if possible, Lot 101, they want to have a side entry block or something. Whatever the board wants to do on the sidewalk, we go to the middle of the right-way, we go to our property line. We're happy to do the sidewalks, whatever way the board says.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, was the last name Anderson or Heather?
Anderson.
A-G-N-D-E-R-S-O-N.
I live by 22 East 4th Street at the House and Authority. All right, we had a meeting last week. Okay, ladies, I'm Debbie Simon, I'm Mr. Mary Jeff. Okay, so now Scott's going to be a candidate. So we got three candidates that are going to be running up. And that, but that nobody in the building know that once the House and Authority... The minister who stepped down, I mean resigned, so we think that the other person, who's just automatically stepping in, is pressured. But they said they got to take the other responsibility, who's taking the spot. So today is, um...
This is a plan to go?
No, I'm telling you what they told me. All right, they don't give us no payment. We haven't had a meeting. All right, well, they was going to have one over there at the Stillwell.
Can I stop you for one moment, Neil? This is an application to develop property at a specific address. That's all that this is about.
They didn't have a meeting today, supposed to be at the House and Authority.
That doesn't...
That's why I came here.
Yeah, thanks. I think you're, I don't, doesn't sound like you're in the right place.
We're not going to get anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's my stuff, sir. No, it's mine. See? Apologize. My name is on all that. Apologize. Thank you. All right, so I will be looking, that is from you.
Mr. McFarlane, your apology, please.
Yes, you need to apologize. I apologize. I thought this was a... I was just going to say they didn't have a meeting.
They typically meet on Thursdays. I'm not sure which day.
No, every fourth, every fourth Tuesday, I think, what? The last year, I had a Halloween...
All right, thank you. We have members waiting in the back. We're trying to get, thank you.
Please raise your hand.
Sir, do you swear from testimony before the board with the truth to all of your statements? Yes. Please state your name.
I'm Rob Schubert, A.K. Gethen, Brian.
S.H.U.B.E.R.T.
I'm sorry, what was that person?
I'm Rob.
Thank you.
Okay, I live on the opposite side on the street. I have a couple of issues going here. Now, what I understand, as Mr. Jackson indicated, everything's on the table there. And there's a couple of things that I'm just scratching my head trying to make sense of this. This is in an R-15 zone?
Yes.
Right. I'm just trying to think, they managed to get it to be R-1.
They managed to get it to be R-1. They got approval to build size of the R-1.
Size of the R-1.
They did not change the design.
Okay. Okay, the lot seemed to be around 12,000 square feet.
They approved to build an 12,000 square foot.
So the first premise is that if they would have come to the board, and the planning is from what I understand, the planning board approved this development, but they're coming today with 10,000 square foot lots. Would you have approved it? That's something I think that has to be, you know, I mean, it's 10,000 square feet. I understand now the county changed, that they need a right-way. But right now it's 10,000 square foot lots. And that really doesn't belong in this neighborhood, the proper planning for 10,000 square foot lots in this neighborhood. 12,000 is just scratchy volume. 10,000 is totally unacceptable for this neighborhood. And the issue of people coming to purchase these properties, many of them come from out of state. They don't even know that, what some of these members on board indicated, that they're not even aware of what you can do in the backyard. You cannot touch anything. These houses over here don't have a deck. They're not allowed to have a deck. Are these people going to go and buy these houses that has a deck on it, and we're not going to put a deed restriction on it? We're not going to tell these people? I mean, who's going to do that?
Who's going to tell them? Who'll be in the purchase agreement?
Purchase agreement, but there's no deed at all. I mean, it should be, I mean, all the neighbors coming, our parents, they should be a deed restriction on those lots. And the planning board approved this subdivision. I'm looking at it. You have to scratch your head and say, what went on over here? We don't even have a firm delineation of this highly sensitive environmental area for these two lots. I'm sorry. Those two that backed up, do not have a deck. You know, they'll come and ask for a variance in zoning. Zoning, you have no idea what's going on, and they have no problem.
They do not give a variance on the...
But they will know. They will have no idea.
They can't come down and have to go to the D E P. All right, listen, this is not a debate.
Yeah, I'm just bringing up these valid points from what we were trying to understand.
Anything else?
Yes. This also, this area, again, this is on the County Line Road. There's a variance that was given for the mall parking variances and other variances. For Broken Ridge is a beautiful building there. There's a shopping and office complex. That was a variance given. Seems like over here, this division, subdivision, there was some type of, I don't know what you call variance, I'm not a technical. But definitely it's not an R-15. It's 12,000 square foot. The variances are given. In the future, you're planning, I know what's going on in the neighborhood, there's planning to be another 45 houses on the other side. It's going to be a very busy, very dense area. Everything should be on the table over here. I mean, this is a very environmentally sensitive area. The traffic is just going to be out of control with all the cars coming with the capital, especially. Even now, sometimes during the day, it's impossible. You know what goes on over there on Somerset. This is what's going to happen over there on Brook Road. So this is not a joking matter, what they're proposing over here, to go to 10,000 square feet on these lots on County Line Road. Not having that, and just like, yeah, it's no problem. This isn't a simple request from the applicant. It's going to have, I think, serious ramifications to the neighborhood, to proposed buyers. And sometimes even, what I've seen, that these builders get ahead of themselves by asking all these variances, and then they get stuck. So sometimes it's more prudent to actually think, maybe give up on one, like Mrs. Stillwell was indicating, for those lots, give a backyard, front of county, take one lot on the county. And now I can deal with it, and they come back to us.
On the county, we have four of these lines over.
On the county, okay. I don't know. I don't know. I'm just saying right now, 10,000 square foot is just inappropriate for this neighborhood. And to the back, take off like Mrs. Stillwell said, that goes up to the environmental watershed. Just take off one lot and put one next to it. You're getting ahead of yourself. I mean, you want to go and sell these houses too. You want to have a proper planning. You want to have appropriate, there are people going to buy it. And they're not going to run to these houses when you have all these situations, all these problems on these houses. Thank you.
Whatever the buyer purchases, it's probably conceded. That's why it's setting a precedent for being 10,000 square foot, not that that's an issue.
Okay, so just, again, I'm all for putting on a deed restriction on those two lots that are near. There's no reason why it shouldn't be done. Very reasonable.
Thank you. Mr. Herschel, one of the things we could do instead of a deed restriction per se is a notification that you put in the chain of title that there's a repair and delineation, a 300-foot buffer, and that no activity is permitted under current regulations. That doesn't create a deed restriction, but it puts people on notice that regulation is restricted.
It has to be in the purchase agreement.
I will put in the contract to put it in the chain of titles.
Also, the future of what's in the...
So if somebody sells to the next person, it'll be in the chain of title. And then, you know, the deed restriction could be that this shall be repeated in the chain of title.
Please, do you swear from testimony before the board with the truth to all of your statements?
I have from Moshe Zanis-Zee. I'm the guest on 2014 Hard Lake, New Jersey, 871. I just want to mention something I would, great Mr. Jackson said, I want to pick up on what the last speaker spoke about. I know we always say everything is case-specific, site-specific, and these guys are going to do values and all that. But just a few blocks down from this wonderful accommodation on County Line Road, brand-new homes were sold to people from out of town who didn't think that they would be doomed. And the Realtors told them that we have a technical issue putting in a deck. After you close, you'll be able to put in a deck with no technical issues. And the great Brian, who I love very much, was actually at this podium, at the zoning board, afterwards trying to fix up after they put in the deck illegally and code enforcement went out there, right? Okay, so everyone was here. So I would just recommend, like the last two, this attorney and Mr. Schubert said, about the restriction. Regarding what Mr. Jackson said about, there are other ideas. I just want to add on the table that I'm under contract right now myself to buy a house in Lakewood. And at the very early stages, you really don't see much. I'm telling you this because I'm buying a house, I hope, I hope it works out, that I'm buying a house in Lakewood. At the early stages of the contract, it's all textbook. It's all, what? Template, what?
Boilerplate.
I don't know what that means, but yeah. It's all a form. It's all, you know, they fill in some blanks, but that's about it. So without a deed restriction, it's not up there. You find out about it after you've signed it on the dotted line. It's a little too late.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else's problem would like to be heard?
Yes, sure. Brian, please.
Mr. Sabley.
Can you testify that all these properties do have decks?
Except for these two, boxes are shown on the plan. These two could have decks also. If you built the house a little smaller and put it back in.
What's this box, the footprint of the house there? Is it reasonable to make it smaller?
I think we have them about 50 by 40 showing.
Well, the building envelope does not mean that the design of the house will be within that building envelope, but it doesn't also mean that it would conform to take up every inch of that building envelope. So you're showing roughly 2,000 square foot footprint?
Yes, roughly.
So technically, you could shrink it to 1,500.
Yeah, and you have a deck. Yeah.
They all four block up apart.
Okay. Okay, Brian, one more question, I'm sorry. And are you aware of any other 10,000 square foot properties in that area?
No.
No, but this will be the first and hopefully the only four that are less than 12,000.
Well, when the county goes through and condemns the right-of-way from the other people and buys the right-of-way from the other people, some of the other houses that front on there will then lose that 1,500 square feet, and they'll pay with these smaller lots as well.
By not, you don't think that can go down to 10,000 square feet? Probably from 15 to 14, I believe.
Well, there's lots further down the street that are also 12,000, so, and those who are done with 16-foot right-of-way. So when the county comes by to get that additional right-of-way, and I don't expect that to be anytime soon. So for the foreseeable future, anybody driving down isn't going to see that this is a 10,500 square foot lot, because it's setback that 13 feet more, that it has an additional 13 feet of right-of-way more than everybody else along the road. It was 6 feet, it went to 86, so all the way along. But when that 13, additional 13 feet is taken, both the 12,000 square foot lots down the road, they'll be in the same, and we have one that's 11, one that's 10, 8, and then the two that are in the 10, 14, 15.
This will be the only one that's less than 12,000.
Thank you.
Just one very brief comment with regard to the deed restrictions.
And that's a problem? He's an advocate. Did he do some, or he did wrap up, he did a debt? And you're here as the attorney for your parents, correct?
Absolutely, and I am wrapping up. All that I wanted to note for the board is that Lakewood has adopted the model ordinance relating to riparian lands, Ordinance Number 217-24, Section 2. In that model ordinance, it does require deed restrictions. I think that the board should review that ordinance before ruling on the obligation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Adam?
Anybody else's problem would like to be heard?
Say no, we'll close with the public. Adam, do I do I? Let him go. Would you like to make closing arguments?
Yeah, just a few things. Again, the application is here before this evening is very similar to the one that was previously approved by this board 17 years ago. We're back here, I don't want to go on too long. Again, the county came along, they gave a few extra feet. Based upon that, some of the front four lots are shrinking a little bit. We have clarified and done what we were supposed to do, what we said we were going to do last time anyway, and actually delineated where the weapons line goes. We've indicated, we have no problem, one, putting into the contract notice to all the buyers. We have no problem with either a memorandum understanding that's being recorded for these lots. If the township ordinance requires us to put it in a deed, we have no problem doing that. That's what the ordinance is. The only thing I would ask is just the caveat that we add, and should any future buyer seek to get a permit from the D E P, that's who the only one who's ready, by the way, for a deck or a backdoor. It's not this board, it's not the zoning board. It would have to be the D E P, that that would be self-extinguished. That would be the only thing I would ask.
On the sides of the signs, they can put a deck.
On the sides of the block, we build a smaller, but if you go within the weapons buffer, the D E P's only could say, we would have no problem. That's the only option. Otherwise, we have no problem. The other decision, we have two on the record. Again, I rest this board just, again, reapprove what has previously been...
Thank you. I would ask for a motion. Oh, Mr. Jackson, I'm sorry. What I would recommend, there's different things, Mr. Gerth, Mr. Gerthner reminded me, you can do conservation easement, you can do a deed restriction. The thing that concerns me with a deed restriction is you're creating something that says you can't use that property. Maybe this board would like them to be able to use that property. Maybe they could convince the D E P someday to move that line. Maybe, for whatever reason, the topography there is apparently unusable. We don't know. So what my recommendation is, is that the concern is, that you just want to alert people to this, that you put in the chain of title a notice that there is a riparian buffer, and that they're on notice, that there are environmental constraints within that buffer, that they should consult with the D E P or language to that effect. It doesn't create... Let me ask you one question, Mr. Jackson. Why can't we just say, let's say someone's making a motion, that that envelope of 2,000 square feet should be maximum 1,500, that should leave room for backyard, playground, whatever they want, porch, whatever they want? Well, that would require some finesse, that the board engineer, they have to redraw the building envelope, and they have to say that if you put a deck in the 2,000 square foot envelope... So we could make a motion that we agree that the building envelope should be maximum, and why don't we go deck? Maybe the deed restraint, or the deed notice should say that the building envelope, the maximum, no decks are permitted or no improvements will be allowed outside of the actual building envelope. Okay? I'm okay with that.
I agree with that. I kind of like Mr. Fetterman, because if you put the deed restriction, it's got teeth, and any semi-complimented attorney reviewing that deed is going to see it. But if you really, really, really want to go back to the D E P and get your approval, then we have built-in language that's self-extinguishing. It's automatically going away, so we achieve our objective of...
Is that possible, Mr. Jackson? I think that's a great idea. I don't know if that's completely sustainable. I'll look into that, and if it is possible, I'll put in the resolution, or I'll make a recommendation when we do the resolution adoption. But I know what you want to do. You want to, and it's the same thing I said, put a notification in there that if they got the line moved...
Yeah, but we want to scare them a little bit. I mean, it's got to really stick out.
I have something to add for the report.
Huh? Yeah, so it's, I think it's, if this self-extinguishing, if it works, then you can...
I'll look into the feasibility of the self-extinguishing language, and I don't see why... Or make the building envelope just small? Then you have to... I'll ask, Mr. Fetterman, provide me the proposed language for that, and then I'll incorporate this resolution if I'm satisfied. Okay. I would ask for a motion on this application. And I just want to say that any motion, if we make a motion to approve, based on all what you agreed upon, Mr. Fetterman, you agreed upon, Mrs. Stillwell, all the conditions that you stated is part of the motion that you agree. You did not want right, you did not want one way, one of the full movement on both roads. I will ask for a next motion. I'm personally, I don't think it's a good idea to have 10,000 square foot properties over here, but I would give it, if we can make a one-way around the whole property. Can I make a contingent to this, and if the county does not want one way in and one way out, then the whole approval is not approved. Is that an option?
then the whole approval is not approved, is that an option?
Well, I think you should call the board, because I know Mr. Herzl said the opposite, so I think you should find out who the board is on the circulation, whether you want one way in or...
I think at least one street has to be going in, going south off county line. I don't think they both have to be one way out. I don't think the second street has to be one way out, that could be a two-way street as well, going in south off county line. At least one way has to be strictly one way going inside off county line. One street has to be one way going off the county line.
And the other one?
The other one doesn't really make a difference, especially the one, like I said before, Bogart, if it's going to continue further south, it would be very inconvenient for that being the one way.
But isn't this a big deal? So you could have one way coming this, and two way coming that, is that...
No, no, not still well. I'm saying...
Is the Bogart... Bogart is not Indian. I believe so. What are you talking about?
That's which can be finished.
Only bricks and paint. It's a big deal. He... Mr. Fuentes, what do you think? Okay, you think it should be one way in, one way out, just one way or two way going in?
I prefer two ways.
You prefer two ways. Mr. Garfield?
Just one way.
And Seb, you say one way?
Okay, Mr. Stern?
One way feels right.
One way? Mr. Myers?
Uh, one way.
One way? And Mr. Ritz?
Yes, one way.
And we would have to make that subject to the county, we'll make that request to the county, and tell you can add it, and...
That's how the township, because the county right-of-way is a township approach.
Basically, the majority of the board would like to see it one way.
Okay. I would ask if I could... We cannot get that for some reason, some jurisdiction or some department, then my...
And the back lots, the wording titles, whatever it is, will be...
So is that a motion?
Yeah.
You got to go to the mic.
Mr. Fuentes? I can't hear you.
The one way that we're talking about here is what street?
Going in at breaks and coming out, I think an Adian.
This could concentrate for you. It's obsolete. I think what the board is talking about is county block wise.
Right, yes, yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Mr. McFarlane, Mr. Flannery, do you see any particular issue with that type of circulation that the board's discussing? Is that something that's going to cause...
I'm optimistic that we'll get the county to agree to it. Every traffic engineer that he's going to talk to is going to have a different idea on how to do that. I think he could accomplish the same goal by making the entrance closest to the brook a right-in, right-out only, because I don't think it causes any problems at that street if somebody comes out and makes a right turn, as opposed to...
Yeah, but no one will listen to the sign. They're more likely to follow one way.
The one-way signs are going to be...
Brian, we have a motion on the table, it's going to be one way. Let's leave it.
Okay.
Okay, so it's the same making a motion, we have a second.
All second, and we're putting in the deed restriction for the two bottom line lots that would be expunged, work in the day, expunged, if somebody makes a DEP application and successful, correct?
Yes. So we have a motion on the second, will you please?
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
And Mr. Ritz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. And Google does the work, correct?
Yes.
It's not going to be hard on them, it's going to be...
Yes, the board has specifically been motion before where they want the avenue to request something from the county, but if it's not free, they don't see the line. In this case, you are saying the school is a one-way approval. If the county don't go along with that, they have to come back and get another approval.
Okay, Tyler, I'd like to go through the agenda for a second.
Okay.
For the record, Mr. Stern has left right now.
Thank you.
Okay, and we are not going to get through the whole agenda today.
Right.
And I have to, we have a few people that leave at nine o'clock, so we have 35 minutes. The audience, who's here in the audience, which application?
Number nine.
Are you for nine?
Nine.
I think we should deal with maybe with mine right now, because the dinner, I hear it, and we'll see which ones...
The other applications are one, two, three, four, four minor subdivisions, three of which are realigned, we can bang all of them.
Okay.
I hope with you.
And I apologize, it appears...
That's why we have the secretary...
And here's the objective number nine, that we've determined, we saw that by email from Mr. Flannery.
Mr. Chairman, before we get to number nine, let me speak to number two. I would like to retain our position, because we would have been in a micro number two, but two others behind us got to be heard, and number one, I think frankly took more time than everybody expected, but...
Yeah, the only thing I think of two may take up the rest of the time.
Number five also has an objecting attorney, Mr. Gerth is here on the...
Please be quiet in the audience. Which one should be listed, when the motion table the rest right now? Which ones do you think could be done, you know, exponentially?
I personally always think it's fair to go in order, but if you understand that we go with that major subdivision...
Let's go to number two, do you think you can finish it? Who's the attorney's number two?
I...
Do you think you can finish it?
I, Mr. Flannery, I have to do it quickly, I know that there is a non-identified gentleman who's objecting, but I think it should go quickly.
Public, please try and keep it down, I'm echoing up here, thank you.
All right, we're... Please be quiet in the audience. So let's go to number two, and then I'll just leave a few minutes, anything else, we should table it to a different agenda.
All right, you want to call number two?
Number two is SD 2357, Mark Properties, it's a major subdivision for the eight lots from one of my...
Yes, the project has some submission waivers, which we can support, because everything in the legal era of those submission waivers, it's always the best way to imply. So first of all, there's this, we need to act on the submission waivers.
We would ask that submission waivers be granted, as we note in the engineer's report, they're recommended, and the comments will be accepted.
We have a motion to...
I'll second.
Okay. As far as zoning, the only issue would be wall street parking and the number of wall street parking spaces, whether you can ask for variance or not, or amend the architectural plans or rent the driveways.
We would typically provide the architecturals at the time of plant, and we will show at that time that the number of parking spaces provided are consistent, or as I stated...
And the township ordinance, of course. So you're leaving on the table that you made for five spaces and...
Yeah. These are exceedingly deep lots, 190 feet, we do have the kind of or permeters that that's with a lot of...
Right now, based on, they submitted architectural plans, and we did account that they would be five spaces, and right now they're showing the board. So that's why, that's why we're not going to see it.
Brian, you'll put my...
You'll... Mr. Flannery, speaking of testimony, we can pray right hand to your square or affirmative. The testimony will give before the board, be the district, the whole within nothing.
My plan, we're back in New Jersey, licensed professional, and we're a professional planner, it's indicating in the engineer's report, the only question, our variance is respect to parking, and my testimony is we're not requesting a parking variance, we have plenty of depth, we can add all the parking that we need, we submitted typical townhouse plans, and when you include the attic in the basement, it says we need five, we can fit six or eight parking spaces if we need. Were the signs conforming? Totally conforming, I have to apologize. I think, in fact, we're allowed to have 85 square foot lots, duplex lots, and they're 12,000, so they're exceeding it. The lot widths, we, that's why we exceed them with all the other, because we only have a certain amount of property, but it provides nice lots that have the availability for plenty of parking, and additionally, nice...
Very arid.
It's a very nice property.
Basically, you just wonder, no variance?
That is correct.
Your consensus with what the board engineer said, no variance is here necessary for this proposal?
The report indicates to provide testimony about a homeowners association, and we would do what we normally do, there would be no homeowners association, there would be the typical deed that you have for the zero-out line, the drainage off the street would be maintained by the adjacent property owners, we do all the standard Lakewood items, treachery cycling, we know we need DEBW approval, and it would be roll-out standards for not imposing trench enclosures in the front, duplex, everybody has access to the back, if you can't get involved in the backyard, and we comply with all of the requested information with respect to the shade tree permission, comments might responsibly say that as usual, we would do everything that's required by the ordinance, and anything that seems to be practical by your board of testimony. Anything more on some other questions?
Yes.
Yitzchak Goldsmith, HD 7, Fisher Boulevard.
Please tell your last first name.
First Y I T Z C H A K, last name G O L D S M I T H.
Square or firm testimony given before the board, the district, all within nothing.
Thank you. Okay, we're here again about this application, we're here two years ago on this application, when they self-divided it. There's a piece of the property that's R12, I know the junior court calls it a sliver, that actually was not in from 100 years ago. Two years ago, they came, moved the line, and included R12 in here. And when I brought up objection then, I was told by the board members, well, it worked nice for anything now, and they're going to have to put by both lots. So this R12 was put in by the applicant, so therefore, in essence, you are, by putting a duplex on R12 that you approved to put into such an environment, I think it should be in front of the zoning board, but you're the ones who actually put R12 into this application. Number two calling you a sliver, I think is also...
Suggest, is one of his R12, I suppose, how that's all that?
Well, I like, that's a pretty significant issue, part of this property is in the R12. I'd like to know what that's about.
The map shows that there is 18 feet of the property is in the R12. The majority of it is in the HD 7. The ordinance provides that if you have a lot that's in a split zone, you can take 20 feet on the other side of the split zone and use the HD 7 though. So we only have 18, the 20-foot overlap covers the entire...
The person, the whole property is in the HD 7 zone. As Mr. Flannery mentioned, this is only 18 feet that approaches into R12. It doesn't make sense to review the...
Our ordinance allows on the split lot for the new substance...
I could give you the provision from the ordinance, the second by the right board.
Well, what Mr. Flannery is indicating is that there's an ordinance that allows the person to camp, so that does not become a deed variance, in other words, you can... And you know, I've also heard your activity doesn't go over into the other zone.
But it does, the house is on the R12. The house, it's not just a sliver in the back inside, the house is actually on the R12. Half the house is on the R12 itself. And if you split the lots like they're planning, it's not a sliver of the whole thing, it's 25% of that lot.
How does it take place with Mr. Flannery, affirmative? Because if it's in the wrong zone, that's...
Does it have to...
Maybe, I want to see the ordinance, Mr. Flannery, affirmative.
You show on the...
This is the R12 line, half the house is in the R12.
What's all about it?
If it's a single family, it's conforming. Four, three blocks is a one-single family, 100%, but a duplex on R12 that he itself put into this situation was not different 20 years ago, and I even brought it up, and he told me, well, if he ever tries, then, you know, lots will be subject to all things, and how would that be happen years later?
Mr. Doyle, can you address this, well, Mr. Flannery's looking for the ordinance? And I'll start with the premise, if a portion of one of the lots is in the wrong zone, then that's an issue unless there's ordinance somehow removes it. Typically, in other towns, with which you and I are both familiar, that would be appropriate. In this municipality, evidently as Mr. Flannery said, and as Curry said in his report, he noted specifically, the subject site is located mostly within the HD high-rate development zone, and an 18-foot sliver, while objection might be made to it, that was Curry's appropriate word, given the size of this 18 feet versus the 200-foot width, that's an appropriate word, in the R12 single-family residential district. So you've got that sliver in the R12, gentleman is suggesting, well, it ought to all be considered as R12. Not so. To read on, Curry says, the site is generally surrounded by the wooded area and residential development. So he knew the zoning, he knew the area, he knew the nature of the site, and then he concludes, no variance is here necessary for this proposed major subdivision. That's what Mr. Boats said, but I'd like to see the ordinance, because normally, if you're creating a lot that's undersized for the zone, and the zone line goes through the middle of the structure, that would be an issue, but if there's, Mr. Flannery's still trying to find the ordinance section, that says in that circumstance, you can approach into the, because it would also be unusual to have a zone line down the middle of a property, too.
Excuse me. The zoning line was developed by reason of the master plan process from the zoning board, the subdivision was created by this board. They knew what they did then is correct, and I think this application, as has been determined at this point, is correct to be put in.
Can you find that, Mr. Flannery?
Why were the sections were changed with the recent master plan, and the basements and the... So I would have to, I don't know if I had to do ordinance within section 18-900. And certainly, if that's an issue, that building is in the zone, we could make the lots narrower.
I'm sorry, but if that's a lot, it has to have a zone that has different requirements, that whole lot...
Not different requirements, it's not...
That is, that is not a problem.
Duplex, it's a single... It's built as long, it rests with the last...
It might be local park.
It must be a safe bet, it's not...
And I wish you...
So a single family...
We're going to get a look.
And that's something that might be an opinion from the zoning board.
I'd like to have a little...
Actually, the ordinance, the plan has merged with the...
Well, I think the way we resolve this is the applicant, and his application, so the three duplexes shown, the fourth duplex, that is the area in question, we would make a single family, and then the applicant can do research, and if he finds a way, he can come back in the future, ask for a duplex on it. come back in the future and ask for a duplex on it.
Why do you think there's only one?
Well, because, yeah, because we're here now, so we can get these three duplexes that are larger than required, and a single family, and if he finds a single family buyer, and Mr. Golzmann loves this neighborhood, and maybe there's somebody in this neighborhood that would pay more for the single there, he'll sell the single, and Mr. Golzmann will be happy, the applicant will be happy, and we're already here, we've submitted all the plans, it's a simple change. So three duplexes and a single family.
All right, so if you're demanding your application to seek a single home there, in any event that you find authority that you can put a duplex there, you'll reapply, or you'll have to notice at least, and that might be a new application, if they not.
I will look at this application, I'll get my notes in now. Anybody else? I'll write here, please. Say no, both, that's the motion to the application. Mr. Meyer, second, roll call please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Fletschbaum.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzler.
Yes.
Mr. Star. Is gone, I'm sorry, Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Raisik.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Ellie, you have 20 minutes, what realistically can we go through?
Do you commit next minor subdivision, it's two lots.
Okay, number three.
SD 2402 Imperial Dynamics LLC, minor subdivision, create two lots from one of these places.
At this time, the subdivision is not applied to the York County Plan for, will be required for the small farm and grain and the waiver at this point. You did lots. Well, you did that sometime before then.
So we don't need the waiver?
So, now they don't need the waiver. No, we say this only.
Okay, they, this application needs variances for minimum lot width, they're proposing lot widths of 75 feet or 100 feet required, and they're also applying for variances for minimum combined side yard setbacks, they're proposing combined side yard setbacks of 20 feet, whereas 25 required, I assume what they're trying to do is like 10 feet on each side of the house.
Thank you so much, good evening, Mary Winessey, on behalf of the applicant Imperial Dynamics LLC. This application is for a minor subdivision of an existing oversized lot on Reed Place, which is in the Albert Avenue neighborhood, in the R20 zone, and we're proposing to subdivide that into two lots. Each of the lots will have greater than 20,000 square feet, so the lots are conforming as to lot size of the R20 zone. The only relief, as Dave pointed out, the only relief that we are seeking is for lot widths of 75 feet each, where 100 feet is required, and for combined side yard setbacks of 20 feet, which yes, would be, I presume, 10 feet on each side, whereas 25 feet would be, a combined side yard setback of 25 feet would be required in the R20 zone. At this point, I'm going to call and ask for, yes, Mr. Winessey, please go.
You swear from testimony before this board, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. My line is question, engineer, question, plan, move to Jersey. This is going to be a lot of the Albert Avenue area, and then a 75. I was just gonna get that real quick. There are, just hit the number. There's 18 75-foot wide lots, there's another possible 14 75-foot wide lot. This whole lot is basically, is 150-foot wide lots, and it's already started, we subdivided all those lots again. It's just continuing the existing pattern on the lot. We've also requested variances for the 20-foot side yard setbacks, because if you take a lot, plus the 100 feet wide, push down to 75, you're really constricting that building into type houses that are built.
You still don't know?
No, 10 on each side is a 50-foot wide ex, and if you go, if you drive up and down those streets, those are very beautiful.
And the story goes, it's a, it's.
Yes, on this, on this lot. If there's anything, we'll refer to, we'll get just all the comments and we'll let you know.
Any questions? No one located the public, anybody from the public like to be heard in this application? Say no, no closing, no motion, no subpoenas. Okay, Mr. Meyer, move, Mr. Flannery, second, call call please.
Mr. Garfield, Mr. Sable. Mr. Fletschbaum.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Raisik.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um.
You can do another.
Okay, I just hope you do another, I think number five is the lengthy application. Okay, so he's asked, okay, who's that turning to that?
Mr. Fletchbaum.
Right. First, I'll be educated, it's not my fault. Second, okay, so when the, the number five they did?
Uh, October 26th is our next meeting, because of, I'm sorry, November 26th, because the November 12th meeting is the call, so it'll be November 26th.
Okay, is that okay with you? Hello, number six. Okay, so Mr. Jackson, do you want to?
Number five on tonight's calendar, SP 2345 AA, Beth Minver's cover, has been adjourned and will be heard on November 26, 2019, 6 o'clock, this meeting, all day, no pervert notices.
Next, we just a real one.
SD 2404, after state of the city renewal, minor subdivision, real line lot lines, submit that will after the state of the ball.
Dave, would you like to go through the report?
Yes, this is a minor subdivision, and I believe the reason for the minor subdivision is to realign the lot lines, but it'd be more than the green, I think the problem originally was when it was modified the first time, it's a title problem, and that configuration, they had title to that area invasion, and that's the reason for this subdivision, now they're getting title to that, and then just wait it to come back in future with site plans for both lots, but it's south, that's the line. And the only, they don't need any variances to do this, they need, is design waivers from street trees on the frontage, but I should point out that that would be taken care of once the site plans are covered for those two lots, so this is a very simple application.
Good evening, once again, Mary Winessey, on behalf of the applicant Avenue of the State's Urban Renewal LLC, Dave, you did my job pretty well, it doesn't get much simpler than this, this is really a simple minor subdivision application, just to create the lots, we will be back with a site plan application for a new state-of-the-art office building on proposal lot 2.14.
Both lots are totally conforming.
Both lots are totally conforming, and just to elaborate a drop without cluttering the agenda here, there was initially Garza matter, it was a title issue to portion this property, as you remember, because we had several of these that were affected, and that is the reason that the subdivision is being redone at this point, that's it, both lots are fully conforming, no variances.
Any questions, any ward members? Sign where it's currently there now, so we're not taking off any heat from the energy.
We didn't, we didn't even swear in there.
I know.
That's what I said, this was.
No, you have to.
No, probably not. I think we're done.
I will open to the public, anybody from the public like to be heard in this application? Say no, no closing, no, 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 sorry, this, this is some moves, everybody.
Mr. Garfield. Mr. Sable. Mr. Fletschbaum. Mr. Hertzler.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson. Mr. Raisik.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, there should all be the same.
Okay, you have the next one, do you?
Um, there wasn't, there's an objector on this one, I don't know if he's been satisfied, I believe his questions were quite, the applicant.
If there's an objector, we're gonna table this.
Hi, can we go to the jury?
Hello.
There's conflicting information on the plans about the setback variance petition requested, and we have on that side, it's questioning what that means. Is there a setback variance? Yes or no?
I might have to take.
Yes, then if there is a variance, it probably will be accomplished, so I would recommend.
I'm, I'm table on it. Okay, Brian, number six, Jackson, would you please make an announcement?
That is number seven.
Yes.
Members publicly advised, SD 2397, 453 Ridge LLC, has been adjourned to November 28, 2019, 6 o'clock, this meeting, all day, will be no pervert notices.
26.
26, I apologize, November 26, thank you.
SD 2412, pretend Emerald Core LLC, minor subdivision, to realign lot lines for two lots located in the 4.
Is that simple?
I have not many questions about it, so I'm not particularly familiar with it.
Dave, you have anything on the report on that?
Yes, I have to go, the zoning for you, there, this is to realign lot lines as well, this application, and it will be a variance. There is the site lays out, existing cul-de-sac, and the other part is Fox County Road, what they're doing, they're taking the backyard, backyard area from the larger lot on the county road, moving it to the lot inside the cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac lot needs a minimum lot width variance, so that would be 62.01 feet, whereas 100 feet is required, and it should be noted that that was something that was previously granted for that subdivision, which was originally filed through SD 1882A.
Only other item that's. Dave, there are two lots that are currently approved, and it's saying two lots, so just realigning the lot line. Is that right?
Correct, and the rear of the larger lot that runs the county road, that area is moving, the block is on the cul-de-sac, and it moves enough area for the lot, stays on the county road in the form.
Okay. Where's the other, what's the name? Was that? Yeah, oh, the front with 47.
Correct, correct.
Correct. And right, very wide. That is, that's right.
And the only other thing that needs to be clarified is off-street parking, and that's regarding the existing lot at Fox County Road, whether there's a variance required for the number of parking spaces.
What are they proposing on that one?
Well, it looks like, it looks like.
No common calculations at all.
Correct, that's why we have to testify, make that clear, it looks like, so I move three spaces and it might be four.
Samuel Graham, appearing on behalf of the applicant, good evening, and I will make
it quick, I couldn't have said anything better myself than is indicated in his letter, anything that is being requested by way of a variance is a pre-existing condition, we're simply moving the lot from one current existing lot, which is 30,000 feet, to give 15,000, approximately, additional feet to the lot that's going to be improved. Everything else stays the same, the bulk requirements are all in place, and there's nothing really changing. For technical purposes, I need to be before you, in order to make this application and to make this lot adjustment formal. The spaces, as is indicated on the plans, which you have, there are obviously spaces that are proposed, the lot can hold another many spaces, and I'm sure there'll be sufficient parking, I'm gonna let the engineer testify.
Can you fit one more?
We can widen the driveway and fit an additional two spaces or one space at the variance.
If you add to the plan to provide additional space, make it apply, we're good.
None of them.
No variance.
We can back in the plan.
None of them, they will. Yeah, the provision will be submitted, so that in compliance, we can deal with it.
Okay, any questions, any ward members? Say no, open to the public, anybody from the public like to be heard in this application, please go forward. Say no, no motion, subpoenas. So we have motion, move with addition. My second, call call.
Mr. Garfield. Mr. Sable. Mr. Fletschbaum. Mr. Hertzler.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Raisik, thank you.
Thank you.
And the last application, which we haven't carried or opened up yet, is a change of new site plan exemption, to convert an existing house into a school at 72 White Street, this one does have an objector in here, as well.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, I have to leave at nine o'clock, and I think Mr. Raisik has to leave a few minutes later, we cannot hear this in six minutes.
Oh, adjourn it on the five.
I think that.
There's 100 people here, there's 100 people here.
There's objectives to this application, I think it's only fear.
Mr. Chairman, yes.
Mr. Jackson, speak, who's you say?
Yeah, I, there were some issues regarding this matter, the objector has indicated, then they wrote a letter, Mr. Gazarovski, that they've requested additional time, because they just learned about this, get a notice during the holidays, they weren't prepared. I know Mr. Riley's prepared to request adjournment, I discussed with Mr. Doyle, Mr. Doyle's response is that it's a straightforward application, and really no basis for opposition, and that the board can consider that, and, excuse me, the board can consider that and deny the adjournment request, but you've indicated we've had a nine o'clock curfew, we advise the people this early, and you can't reach this matter, so if there's an objecting attorney here, it's only going to be questioned, the wait, this is certainly would be more than the five minutes that we have before.
Okay. Well, I don't think we have a court was wanting to stay.
So, Mr. Doyle, the board needs a time waiver, what would the date be, Ms. Morris?
November 26.
November 26, can you provide a time waiver till November 26?
I provide a time waiver till November 26. I appreciate Mr. Jackson stating our position, I just wanted to thank you for the points, and I know you're going to, adjournment granted with all the circumstances considered. This is an objection from a school, to an applicant who was a school, I've never seen that happen before, I would hope that the additional time that is now forced upon us and granted by the clock to the objector would allow for the opportunity to appreciate what I just said, so that the matter is simply resolved on November 26.
Thank you very much, I would ask Mr. Riley?
Yes, Riley, I represent the owner next door, I would just make.
Did you ask, take the name of that person, please?
Rabbi Yalden, and the, he knows Esther.
The note says to Malcom.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry.
Sometimes I know, don't do, don't be shy.
I just wanted to, beyond the objections that Mr. Gazarovski put down there, I will note that the note itself is clearly, in my mind, efficient, I've been doing this a long time, this notice doesn't refer to the several variances that are required, and it's clearly deficient, really doesn't tell you, it doesn't even say.
Well, you're a German, so why don't you, Mr. Doyle, and he can determine whether he wants to read the notice.
Well, I am dedicated, as long as I'm here, I want to put it on record.
Thank you.
Will you have the petition, we'll, I may ask to do that.
If he's consenting for the, for the procedural issues, I'm only addressing the subdivision.
And I would ask both of you, if you could sit down, try to work it out, by the time you come back.
We're certainly prepared to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. And so, members publicly advised, the number nine on tonight's calendar, that is SP 2346 AA. Now, so members publicly advised, the number nine on tonight's calendar, that is SP 2346A, I have, um, has been adjourned until November twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, six o'clock this meeting holiday will be no further notice.
We have three things adjourned.
Yes, we do have, uh, we also... Thanks, I'm very happy that you guys don't have to change on the board or meet in public. We want to be sure. I don't know, I guess, but...
Yes.
We have nothing to gain by hiding over doing it, because things are good.
Yeah, I think it's good news.
Yeah, why not? Was it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
Thank you.
What the hell are you? Alright, how do you do? Um, you please. I have a question. Um, I'm gonna make sure that the situation is not too high. I think it's a joint. Uh, you want that? You want that? Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Why should you do that? You can't why should you? Yeah. I think I'm telling you. Alright, good to see you. Good to know you're here, good to see you. Okay, thank you. Yeah.